We will bring this meeting of Peterborough City Council for Tuesday, July 2, 2025, to order. Just a couple of things here. We, Councillors Beamer, Hakey, Parnell, Burke and Vassiliadis are joining us online, but councillor at this time councillor Beamer and Parnell are running a bit late. Councillor Dugay will be here in person, but he is also running a bit late. So we'll ask everybody's patience this evening. We will, we will move forward. MPP David Smith, who was going to make a presentation to us on Monday, he has meetings today in Toronto, so he couldn't be here with us this evening. So his office will reschedule his update to council at another time. The first item of business is our land acknowledgement. We respectfully acknowledge that we're on the treaty and traditional territory of the Mississauga, the Ashen Abic. We offer our gratitude for the First Peoples, for their care for and teachings about our earth and our relations. May we honor those teachings. The next item of business is 30 seconds of silent reflection. I would now ask those who are able to remove your caps and stand for the singing of the National Anthem. Councillor Beamer has now joined us. We just have the update there. Our next item on our agenda is the constitutional statement. The council for the city of Peterborough recognizes the principles contained in our constitution and the Canadian Charter of Rights and Freedoms. The next item we have on our agenda is a ceremonial presentation. Jasbi Rayna, our chief administrative officer, the corporate awards for excellence. Mr. Rayna, please.
Good evening, Your Worship and the members of council. It's a great privilege for me today to introduce a new initiative that speaks directly to the heart of who we are as an organization. At the city of Peterborough, our greatest and most valuable asset is our people, our staff. An incredible 92% of our employees live right here within our community, and they bring with them not just the skills and experience, but a deep, deep sense of belonging, a deep sense of care and a personal commitment to the future of our great city. It's their workplace and it is their home. Across our departments, beside the front-facing service delivery departments like transit, public works, library, rec parks, there are operations that run 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. And much of this work happens quietly behind the scenes, but its impact is visible in every service we deliver, every street we maintain, every program we provide and every citizen we support. To recognize this dedication, I am proud to introduce Corporate Awards of Excellence, a program that puts the spotlight on those who go above and beyond to create value for our organization and our community. What makes this program especially meaningful is that it is peer nominated with staff recognizing their fellow colleagues for their outstanding contributions. Each nomination is carefully reviewed by a selection committee, again made up of staff from across the organization, and they do the recommendations, and these recommendations are then brought forward to the senior leadership team for final approval. This program is proudly managed by our people and culture division, and I want to take this moment to thank them for their leadership in bringing this program to life. Now, it is my pleasure to invite our Director of People and Culture, Jen McFarlane, to share few words and announce the award winners. The awards will be presented by the Mayor Lille on behalf of the council and all of us here at the city of Peterborough. Thank you, and Jen, over to you.
Good evening, Mayor Lille and members of council. As CEO Rena mentioned, the people and culture division is excited to present our new annual Corporate Awards for Excellence program, otherwise known as CAFE Awards. These awards are part of our employee recognition program focused on select areas of service excellence and are performance-based. These recognize city staff who have demonstrated exceptional contributions to the city, supporting the city's strategic plan. This year, we had 24 nominations over four award categories. I'm excited to announce our four award recipients tonight. I'll present each award individually, and then perhaps we can get a photo around the horseshoe afterwards. So the first award is customer service excellence. This award recognizes an individual that has demonstrated outstanding dedication, professionalism, and a commitment to excellence in customer service. This nominee demonstrates outstanding dedication, professionalism, and competence, consistently exceeding expectations and making a meaningful impact. They willingly volunteer for additional responsibilities, deliver exceptional service under pressure, and uphold the highest standards of integrity and accountability. Through their positive attitude and performance, they foster an inclusive and supportive work culture. This year's customer service excellence award goes to Dave Moore, Client Service Worker with Social Services in the Community Services Department. Dave, come join me. I'll just, I'll just say a few words about Dave. Dave's a beloved and respected ambassador for the city, known for his unwavering commitment to exceptional customer service, compassion, and professionalism. Nominated by colleagues, supervisors, and managers in social services, Dave is praised for his kindness, dedication, and ability to connect with both staff and clients, especially those facing significant challenges. Dave consistently goes above and beyond, volunteering for training, covering for colleagues, stepping into demanding frontline roles, and supporting vulnerable clients with empathy and dignity. His calm demeanor and reliable presence have diffused difficult situations and created a safe, welcoming environment. Previously involved in a youth mental health support program, Dave's impact extended well beyond its conclusion. Many clients continue to reach out to him, a testament to the trust and care he fostered. Dave's contributions span across multiple city departments, reflecting his deep-rooted dedication to public service. He embodies the city's values, especially the pillar of community and well-being, and is widely regarded as a true champion for the people of Peterborough. Yep, thanks. The next award is distinguished teamwork. This award recognizes individuals who exemplify best practices of supportive and effective collaboration to achieve a shared goal that aligns with the city's strategic plan. This nominee exemplifies outstanding collaboration, flexibility, and team support. They consistently go above and beyond in their commitment, treating all team members with respect and sharing responsibilities to overcome challenges together. As motivators, they actively engage others, promote shared leadership, and value diverse perspectives. Their openness to feedback and adaptability fosters continuous improvement, while their inclusive approach ensures that success is a collective achievement embraced by the entire team. This year's distinguished teamwork award goes to Jocelyn Blazy, Program Manager of Homelessness and Data in Social Services, the Community Services Department. Jocelyn played a pivotal leadership role in the city's modular housing project, contributing from initial concept development through to full implementation and ongoing support. Her efforts were characterized by exceptional teamwork, flexibility, and collaboration with internal departments and community partners. Jocelyn ensured project momentum. While a formal manager was being hired, she later supported that individual, contributing her knowledge and guidance to ensure success. Her involvement included budget planning, unit design, stakeholder coordination, and tenant selection and transition. Jocelyn facilitated complex legal and insurance negotiations coordinated with a community agency to manage the site, and ensured seamless communication across all parties. She consistently prioritized the project and team, often working beyond regular hours and without seeking personal recognition. Her leadership fostered a collaborative and supportive environment, helping the division meet tight timelines and deliver a project that significantly improved housing stability for vulnerable individuals and enhanced the well-being of the broader community. Jocelyn's contributions were instrumental in the city receiving the 2024 Peter J. Marshall Innovation Award from AMO.
Jen, I wonder if we can get Jocelyn and Dave for a picture inside the horseshoe with members of council who are present?
We have two more awards, so if you want to hold out, we'll just... I'm just as excited about that as you are. The next award is for inspirational leadership. This award recognizes an individual that has demonstrated exceptional leadership qualities throughout their work. This nominee is a respected, accountable, and inclusive leader who leads by example and inspires those around them. They provide clear direction, mentorship, and the necessary tools for success while actively supporting professional development and career growth. Through encouragement and empowerment, they promote team achievements and foster a culture of recognition. Their professionalism, integrity, and commitment model high standards, driving engagement, collaboration, and continuous improvement across the organization. This year's inspirational leadership award goes to Robert Dunford, the Manager of Transportation Planning in Asset Management and Capital Planning Division, Infrastructure Planning and Growth Management Department. Robert embodies the values of accountability, respect, and inclusiveness, creating a positive and collaborative work environment where all voices are valued. Robert leads by example, demonstrating strategic thinking, professionalism, and ethical decision-making that inspire both his team and senior leadership. A dedicated mentor, he actively supports the growth and development of his staff by providing clear direction, coaching, and opportunities for professional advancement. His leadership empowers team members to take initiative, contribute meaningfully, and take pride in their work. He promotes cross-departmental collaboration, enhances project execution, and improves the quality of transportation initiatives through effective coordination and resource management. Robert's impact extends beyond his division, advancing the city's strategic goals in economic development, community well-being, governance, and infrastructure. His commitment to sustainable planning, transparent governance, governance, and workforce development makes him a truly inspirational leader whose influence is felt across the organization. This award recognizes Robert's integrity, vision, and enduring contributions to the city. And the last award is strategy and innovation excellence. This recognizes an individual that has developed and implemented strategic and innovative approaches within areas of responsibility that lead to effective deliverables in support of the city's strategic plan. This nominee is a visionary leader who fosters creativity, innovation, and collaboration to drive meaningful change. They develop forward-thinking strategies aligned with the city's strategic plan and consistently deliver effective, sustainable solutions that improve processes, services, and outcomes. Through strong stakeholder engagement and teamwork, they lead change, overcome challenges with innovative approaches, and translate strategic ideas into tangible results. Their efforts enhance productivity, optimize resources, and support long-term adaptable improvements. This year's strategy and innovation excellence award goes to Joe Crooks, Innovation and Quality Assurance Manager with Social Services in the Community Services Department. Joe was nominated for his outstanding leadership in driving impactful forward-thinking initiatives at Social Services. He has led key projects that have transformed staff development, strategic planning, and service delivery. Joe revitalized the Leadership Development Project by securing a new external training provider and enhancing the program with expert presentations, mentorships, and hands-on project opportunities, empowering 10 staff members to gain real leadership experience and grow their careers. He also led the creation of the Social Services Strategic Plan, aligning it with the city's broader goals, ensuring inclusive consultation with staff, clients, and community partners. To support implementation, Joe introduced a cutting-edge masterwork plan integrated with SharePoint and Power BI, providing a real-time dashboard that tracks progress and boosts transparency and engagement. As project manager, he's kept consultants aligned, staff engaged, and ensured the initiative remains focused and effective. Through these efforts, Joe has demonstrated exceptional strategic insight, a commitment to innovation, and a deep dedication to empowering staff and improving outcomes. His work directly advances the city of Peterborough's pillars of community and well-being and governance and fiscal responsibility, positioning social services for long-term success. Before we jump up and have a quick photo, I just, just as I mentioned, there was 24 nominations this year, which is just a small snapshot of the incredible work of city staff. There are a few honorable mentions that I'd like to share. Both Alana Stender, the Manager of Court Services in the Legislative Services Department, and Dorothy Oliver, the Manager of Life Stabilization in Social Services, were very close runners-up for the inspirational leadership award. I'll share the nomination details with all of those nominated later this week. And thanks to the selection committee members for taking the time to carefully score each nomination and for the feedback provided to enhance the program going forward. Lastly, thanks to Mayor Lille and members of council for allowing me the opportunity to present these awards tonight. So if we can get all of the award winners up, then we'll get some votes.
Thanks, thanks very much, Jen. And these awards really show the incredible talent of the men and women and their skill sets that work for the city of Peterborough each and every day. Congratulations. Before we go to the approval of minutes, I just want to take a moment to thank the many city staff who helped with the Canada Day Parade and celebration yesterday. It was a tremendous success. I've never seen so many happy children with great smiles in a long time. In particular, I want to recognize and thank Stoyan Barkov, Manager of Cultural Services, who coordinated all the aspects of the day, and Andrew Kelly, Cultural Services Facilitator, for his outstanding contributions. The next item is approval of minutes. If someone would like to move in second, councillor Dugay, councillor Baldwin, accomplish your questions, we'll go to a vote. And that is carried. The next item is Declaration of Public Interest. Councillor Dugay, I believe you have one on Argyle?
Yes, that is correct. 780 Argyle Report IPG PL 25-031. And I believe there may be an associated implementing bylaw. The interest arises from a family member co-owning the planning company providing services to the property owner. Thank you.
We'll separate that out. Any members of council who are joining us online, any declarations? No declarations, Mr. Clerk? The next item is registered delegations. The first one is dealing with preliminary information about the 2026 budget, Report FCS FS25-011. Mr. Haleman, please. Rob Haleman. If you give us your name and address for the public record, please. You have five minutes to make a presentation. At the end of four, we'll let you know when you have one minute left. Mr. Haleman, please.
Great, thank you.
I want to privilege, Your Worship. When I was coming in, some of the people asked if we would speak into our mics, that some of them said they were having hard of hearing
Sure.
us speak. So just, they just asked if I would raise that. Okay?
Great point. Thanks so much, councillor.
Am I close enough?
Sorry, Rob.
No, not a problem.
Sorry, Rob, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Not a problem.
Name and address, address for the public record, and you have five minutes, sir.
Absolutely, thank you. So my name is Rob Haleman, and I live at 500 Murray Street in Peterborough.
Please proceed, sir.
Great, thank you. So just over a year ago, during the 2025 Budget Council, or Budget Cycle, as some might recall, that was the first full budget cycle the city went through after Strong Mayor Powers ran into in Peterborough. And that meant that there were some changes to the process, and I had some conversations with staff and with other councillors, and was assured, and it was discussed during the process, that where there was some changes to how things were going to look in meetings and in reports and in the budget itself, that those were just formalities, that the process with council providing direction and drafting and approving the budget was unchanged. When the powers, Strong Mayor Powers were provided to Peterborough, there was assurance that provided that Mayor Lille, you didn't really have any intention of using the powers at that time, that they might not be needed. And I expressed my concern with some members of this council, that while that is, you know, something that I would be willing to take at face value, there's no certainty that future mayors would see the same way. And this was a dangerous situation that we were in, and one that we had to watch out for in coming years. The councillors who I spoke with kind of shared that assessment of the situation. But unfortunately, our anxiety was misplaced. Around this time, of course, we would be expecting council to be providing their guidance for the budget to city staff. So far this year, those deliberations have not taken place. Instead, the mayor has unilaterally issued direction to treasurer. To quote you, Mayor Lille, "There's no accountability, and it's not wrong at all to ask for accountability." Over this council's term, the budget process has become less and less accountable. We've seen the drastic reduction in information made available to council and the public through the reduction from three budget books to one. We've seen fewer opportunities for input from the public, both formal and informal, through the year, and now on top of all that, budgeting by decree. And this has not resulted in more effective process or in better budgets. Restoring accountability begins with this council reclaiming that process. Council must today engage in a substantive conversation about the processes and priorities for the 2026 budget and provide its own accountability or its own direction to staff accordingly, not leave it to decree, and not leave it apparently to an expected 7.44% increase in the all-inclusive rate. To speak specifically to some of that direction that has been provided and the information provided on June 10, I'm confused somewhat by the police budget. The mayoral direction provides a 10% increase. Pitch is primarily needed to meet the cost of new legislation, but that same legislation was provided as the increase for costs last year. Moreover, that direction seems already obsolete. While no plan has been issued by the police board, after directing staff to plan for a 10% increase in the police budget, Mayor Lille, you spoke at the police board and suggested a 15% increase. So already, as I say, the use of Strong Mayor Powers is failing to deliver a clearer process or better budget. This argument gets rehashed every year, and I won't get into it now, but it's not sustainable nor equitable for the police budget to grow faster than the rest of the city budget. There's a comment that the politics of police funding are tired. If any part of the council's work and the draft in the city budget seems tired to any of you, you are welcome to resign. If a 10 or 15% increase is acceptable, then so be it, but it's unreasonable to afford that to only one area of the budget while seeking austerity elsewhere. This is the final chance of the final budget cycle that this council will see through to completion, and a final chance to make good work of the budget process. Every year, council seems to hope for last-minute miracles that don't work, turn out as planned or stumble through making cuts that are small in their financial impact but turn out to be ill-considered or needlessly controversial, and then scrambling later to fix the problems. We heard this year, currently it is the cuts to library staff. Last year, it was the changes to the tax ratios, and in 2023, I think it's what I would say is the single worst decision I've seen a Peterborough council make, which was the so-called freeze to transit funding. At the same time, there's a failure to prevent any, to present any broader vision to the city or address the long-term issues. And the people of Peterborough see this. We all in this, in this community and this council view individual, individual issues differently. But with conversations that I have with people who are engaged with what happens at City Hall, everyone is frustrated. It's, you know, this is speaking purely anecdotally, but there's a very wide perception that decisions that this council makes are often uninformed and inadequately considered. And to be clear, that is a perception that I share. There's many decisions involved in the budget work that I recognize that are practically impossible, and there's a lack of support from higher levels of government that does not make this any easier. But tackling a difficult process is not something to be streamlined. We need more voices heard, not fewer. We need more deliberation, not fewer, and we need more information, not less. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Rob. There may be some questions for you. Questions for Rob? Questions for anybody that, council members online for Rob? No questions? Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
The next presenter is Dennis Carter Edwards. Mr. Carter Edwards, please. Welcome back, sir. Good to see you. You were here a couple of weeks ago. Could we get your Dave and address for the public record, please?
My name is Dennis Carter Edwards. The address, 301 Carnegie Avenue.
And you're And you're speaking on the zoning bylaw amendment 1341 Water Street. Report IPG PL 25-032.
Correct.
Mr. Carter Edwards, you'll have five minutes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor Lille, members of council and city staff. I'm here this evening to speak on behalf of the concerns regarding the zoning bylaw amendment for 1341 Water Street East. In my opinion, the application is problematic on several counts. First, the eight-story building will be way out of proportion to the size and scale of existing residential units in the surrounding neighborhoods. Down the street on Water, there are three above, three-story above-grade housing for students. And to go a little further, at Woodland and Water, there's a four-story unit, nothing near eight stories. Secondly, the addition of some potentially 200 vehicles, the exact number isn't really clear from the material that was provided, to the convergence of traffic from Cumberland, Carnegie, Water, Riverview Park and Zoo, and University Heights poses potential traffic management issues. The latest traffic study that I've been able to read, which was more than 10 years ago, and even that was flawed because it did not include student parking during the school term year. It was only done during the summer. I think it's an issue that needs careful attention. Third, Trent just announced construction of a new college with some 1,300 residential units. This is in addition to the residences that are already under construction on Water Street. I'm sure you've seen them on your drives along that section. In light of program reductions at Trent University and declining foreign student enrollment, partly because of government, federal government policy, it's not clear who exactly will occupy these units being proposed, some 219. If not students, then who? Over the past few years, this city council has approved two further expansions of housing units at Heritage Park. Today, despite this approval, there hasn't been a shovel in the ground. No new housing has been started. I would be interested to see the business case that the company proposing the amendment to the zoning has prepared to secure financing if they simply have to rely on market rent and not student housing. I believe council deserves a clear understanding who will be the renters and what are the implications for parking and for other aspects of this development. Fourth, it's unclear if the requisite infrastructure exists to meet the heavy demand potentially that this new eight-story building will have. Water pressure in the Fargona development, from my understanding, just meets the minimum requirements. What studies have been done to address any potential impacts on the existing infrastructure in that part of town? Fifth, the development potentially will encroach on the Stormwater Management Pond or 227 Fargona and the water course that runs through this area. My understanding is that ORCA is in charge of maintaining inspection and assessment of water quality, and they will be looking for any important mitigating measures that may be taken if runoff from the parking area impacts on the water course or the stormwater management pond. As we all know, climate change has brought some pretty severe weather to this area. Very heavy rains, the runoff from parking and accumulated salt and other substances draining into the creek and into the stormwater management pond could have significant implications. So in light of these concerns, I feel that the zoning amendment should not be approved at this time. I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Carter Edwards. There could be some questions. Questions from members that are here? Are there any questions from members who are online? No questions, Mr. Clerk? Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you very much, council.
The next presentation is going to be online. Eldon Theodore from MHBC. Natalie, can we make that connection, please?
Hello?
Hello? Go ahead, Mr. Theodore. You will have five minutes to make a presentation. If you could identify yourself and your address for the public record, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Eldon Theodore from MHBC. That's 750 Western Road, Suite 230, Woodbridge, Ontario. Sorry I could not be there in person. I was there two days ago, hoping to have the opportunity to speak then. But I'm here on behalf of PiMont for the zoning application for 1341 Water Street. And we're asking council reconsider the deferral of the application. The motion that was put before Planning Committee requested that my client pick a route on the application, either the student housing route or the market rental route. We heard the concerns that had been raised and shared at council. And given my client's need to get in the ground quickly and start building, and also recognizing the current state of the economy, particularly around student housing, my client has decided to make the decision to pursue the market rental apartment route only. We provided, and I hope council has the opportunity to see this on the screen, a revised site plan as a revised rendering that illustrates what the anticipated rental market housing would look like on the property. This concept that we provided, it confirms that it can be built on site with this proposed zoning. It meets the required parking in the zoning bylaw without any relief. And we know based on our market research that for a market rental building, it needs one parking space per unit at least to work, and we have provided that. And as shared at last week's Planning Committee meeting, and as shown on the concept, it anticipates the building will have less units. It will be smaller in order to accommodate that. And to do this, we anticipate modifications to the zoning that would remove all provisions related to student housing. That includes the specific definition, as well as the holding provision related to the conversion from student to market, as that is no longer required. We hope that in agreeing to one route quickly and decisively, council could see its way to expediting approval of the application under the modified bylaw. We know that there is still some technical work needed to refine the proposal, including the modifications based on this plan. And we look forward to working with council and your staff, as well as the public and First Nations to finalize these details before site plan approvals issued. And thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I'm happy to answer any questions, should council have any.
Thank you very much, Mr. Theodore. I'm sure there might be questions? Questions? Any colleagues online have a question? Mr. Theodore, I just have a couple of questions. There was a presenter, Mr. Carter Edwards, concerned about runoff, development of the site plan. Do you, you and your team, is there sufficient infrastructure capacity to facilitate this apartment being built? And what is your timeline for construction?
I'll answer the second question first. In terms of timeline of construction, we're waiting on a determination of the ability for the zoning to permit us to make an application so that we can get going with the site plan application. Once that occurs, my client is hoping to get in the ground as soon as possible. So if, if timing permits, and depending on zoning, we could be looking at getting into the ground in early 2026. As it relates to the questions around servicing and runoff, the proposal that we've shown in itself is 159 units, which is less than the 219 we have previously shown. We know on the 219 proposal that we are absolutely able to meet servicing capacity, and your engineering staff have helped to confirm that. Further, as it relates to runoff, all of those items are being managed on-site through catchment and through bioswale design. It's all been designed through the technical work that we've worked with your staff on. And there is, as mentioned previously, there is additional work to do to ensure that we meet city standards so that there is no impact as a release of this application off-site.
Mr. Theodore, if I understand you correctly, the number of units that you're proposing, you're shrinking the number of units, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you very much, sir. Any last chance for questions? Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next presenter is online. It's our city sister motion. I do apologize if I pronounce this incorrectly. Volodymyr Pagli Niuk from the Canada-Ukraine Twin Cities Initiative. Sir, do you, Natalie, do we have this gentleman online?
Hello?
Hello, Walter?
Yes.
You have five minutes, sir, to make a presentation to Peterborough City Council under the Canada-Ukraine Twin Cities Initiative. Please proceed, sir.
Perfect, thank you very much. Good afternoon, your worship, councillors and staff. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. I'd like to share some slides about the municipal twinning process and how it's been used in Canada to build meaningful international partnerships, particularly through the Canada-Ukraine Twin Cities Initiative, which I founded and coordinate. If you put slide two, please. This initiative was launched in 2022, shortly after Russia's full-scale war against Ukraine. Since that time, there has been a strong desire from all levels of government, including municipalities, to find ways to stand with Ukraine. Twinning offers the perfect framework. It gives cities a way to build long-term partnerships with communities, provide support, and foster cultural exchange. In the past three years, we've worked with dozens of municipalities. So far, seven official twinning agreements have been signed, and several more are currently in progress. Slide three, please. What makes this initiative successful is the collaboration behind it. We work closely with members of parliament, centres, municipal councillors and mayors, both in Canada and Ukraine. Slide four, please. We also coordinate with the Embassy of Ukraine in Canada, the Ukrainian-Canadian Congress, and the growing number of private companies and charities that help us deliver support, whether that medical, firefighters' equipment, educational resources, or even art projects. Slide five, please. As for the twinning process itself, it's relatively straightforward and flexible. It begins with identifying a potential sister city. From there, we facilitate contact with the mayor of that city, and often an informal conversation between the two mayors takes place, usually over Zoom. Next comes formal approval. In Canada, this usually means a vote by a city council. In Ukraine, for example, approval is not needed. After that, we typically organize a virtual meeting between the mayors to set shared priorities, followed by the signing of the agreement. Finally, we form a working group of municipal staff, community members, and organizations to develop concrete projects and ensure that the relationship continues to grow. One important note, we don't recommend making in-person visits a requirement. Some municipalities, like the city of Ottawa, have clauses like this in place, and it has prevented them from entering into new twinning agreements due to concerns about travel costs and optics, especially during these times of fiscal restraint. With today's technology, virtual cooperation is not only possible, it's effective, and we've seen it work. Slide six, please. Now, based on the sister city we suggested for you, which is Drohobych in western Ukraine, your team should learn more about that community and how it might complement Peterborough. Look into its size, history, location. Slide four, sorry, next slide. Take a moment to browse photos and videos. Slide eight, you should get a feel of the local character. And the next slide, please. We also recommend exploring its economy and business profile. You may be surprised how many natural points of connection already exist. Slide 10, please. In terms of what sister cities can do together, the possibilities abroad. Municipal partnerships can promote tourism, support arts and cultural exchanges, encourage youth engagement, for example, Zoom calls between high school students. We also see potential in sports partnerships. In fact, we are in discussions with the Ukrainian Hockey Federation to bring a youth team to Canada for a tour that would combine cultural exchange, skill development, and fundraising. There is also room for scientific and educational cooperation, economic development through trade shows, shared environmental initiatives and knowledge exchange, from renewable energy to digital communications. That's all based on our experience. And while all this may sound ambitious, I want to emphasize, twinning carries no financial obligations for municipalities. Slide 11, please. Everything is done based on mutual interest and goodwill. What's most important is this period of cooperation and the opportunity to learn from one another. And the last slide, please. In closing, municipal twinning is a powerful tool that turns solidarity into action. It brings people together, supports communities in need, and opens the door to lasting international relationships. I hope the city of Peterborough will consider joining this effort, and we are here to help you through every step. Thank you very much, and I'm open to your questions.
Walter, thank you very much for a very informative presentation. We can only comprehend what the difficulty that your fellow countrymen are going through in Ukraine today and their struggle with Russia. Are there questions for Walter? Questions for Walter? Councillor Dugay, please.
Thank you, Mayor Lille. Walter, thank you for your most informative, encouraging presentation. I noted a number of Ontario communities, both cities and towns, are involved. I just wanted to, if I heard you correctly, you've indicated there is no financial obligations or potential cost to a Peterborough if we contemplate a twinning agreement. Is that correct?
Yes, that's exactly correct. So basically, all the projects that we would organize or develop after the twinning is signed would be based on the community fundraising or community groups or organizations basis. Basically, we would come together, we would find a way, we would find sponsors if needed with you to deliver a project that you might be interested in. And basically, on the Ukrainian side, we'll do the same.
I appreciate that explanation, sir. Thank you.
Any further questions for Walter? Any of our colleagues online have a question for Walter? Thank you very much, sir. It's a pleasure for us to do your presentation this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your interest. Thank you for greatening me.
Our next series of presenters are dealing with the homeless winter shelter options. I report CSS 25-008. The first presenter is Aden Palmer from One City, Peterborough. Aden, please. Welcome. If we could have your name and address for the public record, then Aden, you'll have five minutes to make a presentation. The floor is yours.
Thank you. My name is Aden Palmer with One City, Peterborough, located at 360 Reed Street in Peterborough. So good evening, Mayor Lille and members of council. My name is Aden, Director of Outreach Services with One City, Peterborough. I'm here not only on behalf of our organization, but alongside the many people across our city who are impacted by housing instability, poverty, and structural exclusion, whether through our work, our communities, or our lived experience. We know that Peterborough is facing a deepening crisis of homelessness, addiction, and poverty, challenges that are not unique to our city but are shaped profoundly by our local response. Council's decisions don't just shape budgets, they shape how we respond to crises and whether our collective efforts move us forward. Last week, council voted against- Last week, council voted against recommendations that would have allowed Trinity to continue operating at current service levels. These programs support a large number of people who cannot access traditional shelters due to capacity limits or barriers associated with mental health, substance use, disability, trauma, identity or systemic exclusion. These are not hypotheticals. They're real people who have repeatedly expressed and demonstrated the need for alternatives and who returned to Trinity because it meets that need. These are not fringe programs. Trinity accounts for 46% of adult emergency shelter spaces in the city, running at 103% capacity. The drop-in serves hundreds of people every day. When these services disappear, the people using them don't. They move into parks, doorways, alleys and emergency rooms. These are not abstract outcomes. We have seen them before and we will see them again. Concerns were raised at last week's meeting that I'd like to address directly. We are fully meeting the obligations of our contract. With the support of grants, donors and community partners, we've expanded well beyond what we are funded to do. We have consistently exceeded our contractual reporting requirements, providing the city with detailed financial statements, service statistics and incident data. Trinity is not without rules. We have a clearly defined and consistently enforced code of conduct. Service restrictions are recorded and shared with the city. Staff are trained in prevention, de-escalation and conflict resolution. Low barrier does not mean no expectations or standards. It means not imposing unnecessary conditions that exclude the very people these services are meant to reach. We acknowledge the impact our presence has had in the neighborhood, but the idea that Trinity is out of control doesn't match the reality on the ground. There is structure. There are policies. There are trained staff on site every hour that we're open, managing issues as they arise. The extended hours were specifically designed to reduce external impact by offering space inside, and we are seeing progress. One City has always maintained that emergency relief programs are not the solution to homelessness, but they are an essential part of the housing continuum, an entry point for people with high barriers and few options. They offer safety, trust and connection, making it possible to move towards stability and housing. Trinity has supported people in accessing employment programs, transitional and supportive housing, referrals to treatment and reconnection with family. It's also been a place of stability for those who have spent years disconnected from services. For those with high acuity or multiple barriers, the path forward is rarely linear, but Trinity is often the first and sometimes the only place where that path begins. We know this council cares deeply about our city. That care has been reflected in your support for innovative housing models, collaborative partnerships and investment in prevention. Trinity is part of that shared progress. Complex crises require layered responses. We have seen what's possible when service providers, city staff and council work together, even when our approaches or our philosophies differ. That variance is not a flaw, it's a strength. This partnership has made our service system stronger, more coordinated and more responsive to the needs of our community. That relationship is worth protecting. We are ready to keep doing our part, and we hope to see that same commitment reflected in your decisions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Auden. There could be some questions. Counselor Real? Counselor Lachica? Counselor Real, please.
Through the chair to Ms. Palmer. Auden, thank you very much for being here tonight. It's really, really appreciate you being here. For some of us that have visited Trinity on several occasions, can you give the other councillors that are here or virtually kind of a day in the life of what's happening at Trinity? You're running a couple of programs there. One is the food program and then the other one is the overnight shelter. So you can kind of, can you kind of give us the cold notes version about what happens in a day for the staff and certainly the people that are using the facility?
Sure.
Auden, please.
Thank you. Yeah, so the program, the drop-in program is one that's funded through the city. It's funded to be open right now from 9:00 AM until 7:00 PM. And it runs throughout the day, providing relief from the elements, just a space to be inside. That's the core operations that the city funds. So it's open to, usually around, there was a high number last week at council. That was our highest number from last year. It's not always 300 a day. It's usually around 200 a day on a high average. And they're coming in to, yes, have a place to rest, to reset, to eat a meal. The meal program does not receive any funding. It's sustained through donations and partnerships. There are multiple service providers who set up in the space to offer services to folks. So there's a community paramedic who comes in to offer wound care and referrals for health services that are beyond her capacity. There are doctors who are in the space once a week, connecting with people who are, for the most part, unattached to a family physician and who require medical support. There's addiction services, service providers who are in the space. There's harm reduction service providers in the space. Housing support service providers in the space. Employment service providers in the space. And so it looks different for every person who's coming there during the day. But for the most part, people are coming in to, yes, meet their basic needs, take a shower, use the washroom, eat a meal, maybe make an appointment with a service provider, maybe get a wound looked at on their body. And then at 7:00 PM, the doors close so that we have an hour to turn the space over for overnight program. It's open from 8:00 PM to 8:00 AM. There are three staff on the floor in each program. Those ratios are set through our service agreement with the city. And so at the overnight program, the doors are locked. It's not a public space. There's confidentiality limitations there. And so it can support up to 45 people on a first-come, first-served basis, something that's also outlined in our service agreement with the city. And so folks line up outside of the doorway, hoping to get a spot. It is full by quarter after eight on most nights. We allow up to three people on a waitlist to remain on the property. Otherwise, we ask people to leave the property if they're not signed in or not on the waitlist, and that's to help us manage the property. And so those folks will stay throughout the night. Some will leave partway through to let somebody else in the space, which is why our capacity number is higher than 100%. And then at 8:00 AM, we ask everyone to leave again so that we can turn the space over in that hour closure to open again the next day at 9:00 AM for drop-in. Does that answer your question?
Through the chair to Auden. I mean, I get a number of calls, probably like a lot of councillors. You know, it's messy outside, a lot of people outside. So what you're telling me is the amount of people that you're dealing with in the daytime and then the times that you have to change over, there are going to be people that are outside milling around.
Yes.
So what precautions or what are you doing to try and mitigate this for the neighborhood? Uncertainly, the calls that I get certainly from either the business or the residents of the area.
Auden, please.
Thank you. The extended hours have certainly helped. We've heard that from the neighborhood working group. We've heard that from the immediate neighborhood. We have heard that from our staff. We've heard that from the people who are accessing service. Less time closed means more time that folks can be inside, and that makes a huge difference. We've increased our staff presence on the grounds, so more frequent walkarounds. We've put higher limitations on things like personal belongings. One of the complicated factors there is that we're not a traditional shelter in the sense that it's a first-come, first-served program. And so we don't have residents. People can be signed in every night of the week, but they need to line up again that night to be able to access the space. And so what that means is that we can't store belongings in our facility. People need to carry them with them wherever they're going, and that means including in-between program hours. We can't store belongings because we can't guarantee that that person is going to have a space inside. And so I think that part of the complication there is that it would be inhumane to ask people not to have any personal belongings, especially since we can't guarantee that they'll be able to come inside for the night or even necessarily the next day. And so when you're looking at folks who have everything that they own with them, it can look messy. It can look disheveled. It can look like garbage. And a lot of the times, it's not. It's the personal belongings of the people who are accessing service there. It's not perfect, and it's one of the biggest concerns that also comes from the people who access the services. We would love storage, and we would love that too. And we'll keep working towards it, but it's also an emergency temporary program. And so we have to balance those two things in tension, and it's really hard.
Through the chair, my last question to you is the $300,000 that we're being asked for to fund is the enhanced or a winter overnight program to augment the people that are staying outside or probably the 40 people last year that were living rough and through some of the most severe winter weather that we've had. So can you tell us a little bit about if that $300,000, if you were, how you would leverage that $300,000 to help these people? And are they in a different part of the building than the normal shelter that we're running or shelter program?
Auden, please.
Thank you. You're referencing the winter response funding? I don't, so that's not something that we've committed to. If we were to look at adding a winter drop-in option at 360, we would be looking, yes, at putting it in a different part of the building with a separate entrance from Trinity Centre. We would hope that it would help to mitigate some of the issues on the property because we wouldn't, or even off the property, because we wouldn't be asking people to leave who can't get a bed. We would be bringing them over to another part of the building to be able to come inside and sit in the drop-in space. Does that answer your question?
Much.
Thank you.
Counselor Lachica, please.
Thank you very much. Through your chair. To Auden, thank you so much for coming to delegate today. Certainly, at General Committee, Trinity's voice was the missing voice, and it's so important to get the facts, the details, information, evidence-based, shared with us tonight. So thank you for that and also for your commitment to leading and managing this very important service to our community. And I really heard you say progress. The word progress resonated with me. And I heard an important component in our housing continuum, and I think that that's so significant. It is a continuum, and there's not just one tool in the toolkit that's needed. There's an array of tools and people and service providers. So thank you for being that meaningful, larger service provider for our most vulnerable community members. I just had a question regarding relationships. We got some information from a third party that provides facilitator service and works with you, with staff at Trinity, as well as the city, as well as the clientele and businesses. So, you know, we have that third party. Can you talk a little bit about the relationship? Is that on a positive trajectory as well when you talk about progress? Thank you.
Thank you. You're referring to the working group, is that? Yeah, correct. Thank you. I have had limited involvement with the working group up until now. It is, yes, a working group that invites local neighbors, businesses in the surrounding area to be part of the conversation, to be heard, you know, around their concerns and to work together to try and find solutions with the city of Peterborough staff, with One City staff, with Peterborough Police. And it's been facilitated for the last year. That funding is coming to an end, and we're committed to continuing the working group beyond that. I would like to personally step into involvement with that working group. I oversee these programs, the staff and the facility as it pertains to Trinity Community Centre, and so it makes sense to me. And for the last year have been heavily involved in developing the programs at Trinity, the operations and staffing and stabilizing things, right? And so there's a report that was, I think, sent to council members around what the working group has done over the last year and what's been heard from the folks who are involved in it. I think we could have more voices at the table, for sure. Would love to hear those, yeah.
Well, through your chair, thank you for participating in that. And we heard from our acknowledged expert staff that have been having some oversight there and participating in the working group, that it has been a positive thing. So it's nice to hear that from you, that there's that alignment in the messaging about that piece of accountability. It's people working together. And a second question, if I may, through your chair. You know, I think the neighborhood and the community, you know, everybody is concerned about safety. And so that question comes up. Would you feel that since settling in and over this time that there is a feeling of safety? And is there access to police if needed? Can you just speak to that for us briefly? Thank you.
Auden, please.
Thank you. It's hard to speak for everyone, you know. I think that safety is a term that can be subjective. I know that there's been improvements around structure, around how people feel, both onsite and off. I'm only speaking about that anecdotally, and so I'm not sure how that's going to land with everyone in the room. But can you repeat the second part of that, please?
If there's a need for police presence, if that's desired, are police there as appropriate as needed?
Yes, absolutely, yes. The drop-in program is a public space. It's open to anybody who wants to come in, and that includes police. There are a few staff on the management team who work closer with police than others, just given the nature of the kind of program that they're running. So the overnight program does have, like I mentioned, confidentiality limitations that can make it difficult. But police are there often, and we speak with them often because our work overlaps in lots of ways. And I think it's important that we find ways to work together in the ways that it does overlap.
Thank you. Just one more supplemental, if I may, Chair. Just so on that police level, I understand that community first, there's been a very positive presence as needed for the police. Just so that that narrative is quashed, that police aren't present, that police aren't available and engaged.
Yeah.
Thank you.
The...
Auden, please.
Thank you. The... There have certainly been misunderstandings with police in the past. And we've been committed to meeting with them along with the city staff to work through those misunderstandings. A lot of it has come down to needing a shared understanding around language, for example. Our policies have been revised in partnership with police to make sure that we have the same language for our staff as police. Because when it comes down to it, our staff have a job. They're worried about breaching confidentiality, for example, and not knowing the right words. But, yeah, so a shared understanding of language was really, really important. And if there's anything extra from city staff who attend those meetings, or not, that's... Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chair.
You're welcome. Counselor Burke online for questions. Counselor Burke, please. Then Counselor DeGue?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, Mayor. Mayor Leal, thank you.
Counselor Burke, please.
Yeah, thank you. Can you hear me?
I can. We can. Lot of clear...
Thank you, Mayor Leal. Through you to Auden. You know, I just want, I appreciate the way that you were able to sort of articulate in your answers to the questions and in your delegation so clearly the work that Trinity does. And I'm so grateful for you for showing up tonight, to be here and for the work that you do day in and day out. I'm sort of still trying to wrap my head around the sort of issues that were raised at our General Committee meeting, because on one hand you had speakers that were worried about how visible homelessness was. They were worried about the amount of people that were set up in our parks. And then, you know, we voted down the idea to maintain the service which reaches so many people. So the questions that I have are, you know, in your best estimation, how many people will have nowhere to go each night if the program closes over the summer? And where do you think those people will go?
Auden, please.
Thank you. I can tell you that in June, so in the, is it 30 days in 30 days in June, we had 147 different people who stayed overnight at Trinity. So I can make guesses about next summer, but I can give you that number right now. That's 147 different people who stayed overnight at Trinity. I think about, it was between 23 or 25 of those people were new guests to us. And when I say that, that doesn't mean new to the city, and it doesn't mean new to homelessness. It just means new to Trinity. I think that's an important point to make. So, yeah, I can guess, but I can also just give you that number based on last month, the first month of the summer.
Thank you. And through, through Mayor Leo, you know, you mentioned, you outlined how many people the daytime program serves, it's, it's hundreds of people that the program serves every day. Where do you think that these people will go during the daytime if that drop-in daytime service isn't open, open in the summertime?
Auden, please.
Yeah, I mean, it depends on their circumstances. So, everyone who comes to the drop-in is an individual with an individual experience, an individual needs. Not everyone who comes to the drop-in is unhoused, for example. There are lots of folks who are precariously housed, who are living in poverty, who are living with a disability, who are seniors, and they come to the drop-in to connect with one another and to have a meal and to maybe get some resources. I see it as more of a prevention piece for those folks, because if they don't have that, and it's maybe the only meal that they have that day, that's going to lead to some, some desperation. As far as the folks who are unhoused who come through during the day, they would, they would be, they would be in the community, and they would be in the emergency rooms, they would be in alleys and in doorways of businesses and in parks and on benches and on the sidewalk.
Thank you, thank you. Mayor Leo, I have two more questions through you, please. Auden, you, you mentioned a little bit, but can you expand on, if you have that information, what changes have been made by One City? What changes have been made to the program to help improve impacts to the community, impacts around the area?
Sure.
Auden, please.
Thank you. Sorry, I keep interrupting. I, yes, a lot of it has come down to, so we implemented a new staffing model for more oversight and supervision on the floor to integrate the programs a little bit better, so communication flows better throughout the programs, because a lot of the same people do come during the day and at night, and when there's disconnection between programs, it makes it harder to do our work well. We have revised our code of conduct and involved the people who use services in that revision. We have, again, placed more limitations on personal belongings, which is a difficult boundary to hold, but it is important. Increased staff presence outside, we have bi-monthly big cleanup days, because, you know, if we, if we weren't doing anything, you would, you would know. There's a lot of accumulation that comes to Trinity, just like on our trails or in other areas of the city. And, and so just more frequent, regular, and involving the people who are using services in that site stewardship as well.
Counselor Burke.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Leo. This is my final question. Auden, thank you so much. I think lastly, if it's okay, can you kind of, can you kind of give the feedback? I know Counselor Yell and I have heard about this in our homelessness meetings from your organization, but can you let the public and the rest of council, please, understand the impact it has on the organization to be facing these type, types of cuts year after year, to be facing these types of program changes frequently? What kind of strain does that put on your organization?
Auden, please.
Yeah, yeah, it's really, it's really difficult in lots of ways. It's also not, yeah, these are temporary programs. I think a certain degree of stability really helps us to stabilize our programs. The first full year that we were open, we weren't able to offer guaranteed hours to our floor staff, for example, they were running on short-term contracts, and we were worried there for a little while when we were first extending the overnight program through the spring and summer, that we were going to have a gap in service. Unfortunately, an agency in community stepped up to fund that month. But had that happened, we could have potentially lost the staffing that we had in place, which is really difficult for them. It's also really difficult for the people who are accessing services when you're coming in and, and nobody knows who you are, what your name, you know, your name, where you're coming from, your story. That's really, really challenging for folks. And, yeah, it's really just that having some degree of certainty helps us plan better. It helps, these things take time, they're not quick. And so, having that, some degree of certainty, recognizing that these are temp, these should be and are temporary programs, and our emergency programs, that having some degree of certainty in there helps us plan better, it helps us look forward a little bit further, and helps us really stabilize our programs, and it's the opposite of that when we don't have the certainty.
Auden, once again, thank you so much for coming and, and speaking, really appreciate it.
Counselor Baldwin, please.
Yeah, thanks very much, Your Worship, Ms. Palmer, thanks for being here. Does your organization get any provincial or federal funding?
Auden, please.
Are you, are you, do you mean One City as an organization? Do you mean Trinity itself?
Yeah, One City.
Yep, there is, there is federal funding that funds one, one of our programs, and through Correction Service Canada. There is some federal funding that also funds staffing at Trinity Community Center. So, the kitchen staff is funded through Reaching Home, we have an outreach worker who's also funded through Reaching Home. We are working with the city on some safety and security improvements for Trinity, that's also a federal grant. That's what I can think of off the top of my head.
Thanks for that. Through Mayor Leo, do you get any money from United Way?
Reaching Home flows through United Way, and there's been some capital, capital improvements that have been funded through United Way, so the floor in Trinity Hall was replaced in the spring. The renovations that we needed to do so we could open were funded in part through United Way. Again, that's what I can think of from the top of my head.
I'm certainly not an expert on low barrier, no barrier, partial barrier shelters, et cetera, et cetera. Could you give us a, a sense of the qualifications of the variety of staff that you have there, what they bring to the table to help, help those that access the shelter?
Auden, please.
Thank you. We do a lot of our training in-house, so at One City, we train in de-escalation, nonviolent communication, first aid and CPR certifications, regulation and, and trauma-informed care, responding to drug poisonings. We don't have educational requirements like a, like a diploma or a degree for floor service position, like a direct service floor staff position, but we do very thorough training and onboarding before people hit the floor.
Good, thank you for that. Through Mayor Leo, I'm told that there are a number of people who will not access a shelter for, for whatever reason, they just simply won't go, and they prefer to be, as Counsel from rail would say, living rough or living in a tent. The question I have, and it's been asked of me throughout the community from time to time, is when an encampment gets taken apart and people are dispersed, and we set up the temporary shelter, does One City give out tents to those who are, who don't have a residence for a night or two? Do you give out, actually give out tents, physically give out tents? Auden?
Our outreach team has certainly given out tents before, it's not a practice that we do every time there's a temporary shelter that's opening, we simply don't have the funding sources to be able to do something like that. None of those tents are ever purchased or distributed through Trinity or through city-funded dollars. They're, for the most part, donated, and very, very few.
Okay, thanks for that. I think that's, that's important.
Can I add something? Thank you. Our outreach team, when, when there's a disenchantment that takes place, their role is to be there to help make that as easy as possible for the folks who are there, so help pack up their belongings into totes, store things when possible, and offer transportation to the, to the temporary shelter, for example. Is, it's, their role is not to make it more difficult or to, or to, yeah, we just don't have the funds or the resources to be able to hand out tents every, every time that happens.
Yeah, thanks for that. I was going to say, Your Worship, I think that's an important distinction to make, that the, the One City organization, as I understand it, and I think you've just verified that, Ms. Palmer, is that the organization, when tents are provided on a, on a temporary basis, they're not using city funds. It's being donated or coming from a different source of revenue, is that's what I'm hearing, Auden?
That's correct.
Can I clarify?
Yes, it's also in our service agreement with the city. Thank you.
Very good. And, and just, just to comment, Your Worship, in, in listening to you speak, Ms. Palmer, you know, the, the system that you describe is, you know, people have to vacate the property for a period of time and then get ready for the, for the evening program, and that people line up. And what I'm hearing you say is that from time to time, someone who has been able to get themselves into the shelter, have a bed for the evening, they're still finding themselves in a precarious situation because they're not assured of getting a bed the next night. And so, you know, it sounds to me, it's kind of counterproductive in a sense that you, you get people in, you give them a safe place to reside for the night, but because of the demand, they themselves, who have brought themselves to that place and are feeling safe about it, can't stay necessarily. Maybe they do get consecutive, consecutive nights, but what I'm hearing you say is, you can't assure that, and so they have to, you know, get their belongings in a cart or some other vehicle, their hands are assisted by someone else, and they disappear for the evening in hopes that they'll get back during the day or the next night. I guess the question I'm asking is if, how many of those people each night would potentially find themselves in that situation? And if we were able to find funding for twenty-five to forty, that's the number I've heard in a report, to set up a separate or another shelter, how impactful might that be, whether it's run by One City, city staff, or another proponent? How, how big an impact would that make on the, on those people that find themselves in that situation? Thank you, Mr. [inaudible].
Auden, please.
Thank you. I just want to make a quick correction. So, we don't ask people to vacate the property in between the program hours, we just ask them to vacate the program space, because we need to clean it and set up cots and get it ready for the overnight, so people can go just out, outside and line up outside. That actually is allowed to start at seven PM. We don't let folks line up before that, because it can cause obstruction in front of the door. And so, at seven PM, folks can line up outside of those doors, but they don't have to leave the property. To answer your question, I, I think that it would be super impactful. How do I measure that? I, I think that people would use it. I think that it would need to be, it would need to be somewhat close, you know, within, within reasonable distance to the downtown core, if that's, you know, where folks are. I think if it were on a far end of, of the city in any direction, it would be tricky. We'd have to figure out some kind of transportation options or something like that to get them there. I think that, I think it would be well-used, and I think it would, it would be super impactful, especially during heat events and cold events.
Okay, thank you for that. And, Your Worship, just to clarify, I wasn't, maybe I misspoke, I didn't, I didn't mean they were having to, to leave the proper, the property proper, it was they couldn't be guaranteed a cot for that night, and so they'd have to leave the physical building and, and then not be assured of getting a cot that, that the day that, or the evening that they vacate. That's also, thank you for clarifying that. Thanks so very much, Your Worship.
You're welcome. Counselor Burke.
Counselor Crowley, please. Thank you, Worship. Auden, thank you for being here. I, I do have a quick question. So, without this municipal funding, and if it doesn't extend Trinity past March of next year, what do you foresee the impact will be to Trinity moving forward?
Auden, please.
The, the impact on, on Trinity or the people who, who come to Trinity?
Oh, in general, with, with One City, the Trinity site, if, if the municipal funding doesn't come through tonight, what do you foresee happens past March of next year?
Thank you. I don't, I don't know. I, I'm, I'm mostly thinking about the impact on, on the people who visit and, and the neighborhood and the community. The, these programs shouldn't have to exist, I think we, we can all agree that that would be our ideal community, and yet, they're necessary, and the impact of galed back or, or eliminated services would be immediate in our city. And you would see it, yeah, in emergency rooms and in parks, and it, and it would be immediately impactful for the people who, who use our services. But I haven't thought that far ahead as to what happens to One City or Trinity. Thank you.
Any further questions for Auden? Anybody online have any questions for Auden? Auden, I just want to thank you personally, Ewan Michael, we're very generous with your time last week to meet with me on, on, on this matter, and I want to thank you for that. The next presenter is Jessica Correa, please, Jessica. If we could have, just have your name and address for the public record, please, and welcome.
Jessica Correa, and I'm at four eighty-six Edison Avenue. Good evening, Mayor Leo and members of council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name again is Jessica Correa, and I want to begin by sincerely thanking you for the decision to continue funding the Housing Stability Fund and to support the Bronx Mission's expansion. These are essential services that protect people on the edge of crisis and offer a pathway out of homelessness. But I'm here tonight because we still have a gap and an opportunity. I urge you to revisit the Trinity Center decision in the 2026 budget. The overnight and daytime drop-in programs at Trinity Center are currently operated by One City Peterborough, the only organization in our city providing low-barrier shelter and daytime drop-in access. These programs serve people who can't access traditional shelters due to trauma, substance use, and other systemic barriers. I also want to acknowledge the serious concerns that have been raised about One City, particularly regarding governance, financial accountability, and neighborhood impacts. Some counselors have even gone so far to say that the organization is a bad apple, and community members have flagged issues around needles, human waste, and public safety. I hear those concerns, and I don't think it's wise to ignore them. I also want to recognize Mayor Leo's public comments regarding One City's staffing costs and the lack of program outcome data in the most recent annual report. These may be valid concerns, but I would strongly suggest that rather than using them to justify pulling back, we use them to create a stronger framework for moving forward through conditional funding, defined reporting milestones, and clearer performance metrics for One City. We can't ignore the role that One City has played in meeting an urgent need in our community. They've helped keep people off the streets, out of emergency rooms, and out of harm's way. Cutting ties without a plan risks alienating an organization that, despite its challenges, has been central to the city's low-barrier response. We only have one provider offering this type of service, and we, without it, people fall into, 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 they don't fall into housing, they fall into parks, alleyways, and into crisis. We cannot pull back from the plug without a backup plan. These services are a critical gap in the housing stability ladder, the very bottom rungs that help people move from unsheltered to supported. They are not the end goal, but they are necessary beginning for many. So, what do we do? We don't abandon people, we improve oversight, we clarify expectations, and we invest smarter. I respectfully recommend that Council, one, provides conditional funding to One City's Trinity Center tied to clear milestones, including financial transparency, public safety, and service impact. Two, launch a new RFP process in 2026 to explore a multi-provider model for low-barrier shelter services, as cities like Hamilton, Kingston, and Guelph have done successfully. Three, revisit the funding decision before the 2026 budget is finalized to allow for measurable outcomes and improvements and ensure we don't create a service gap. And four, collaborate more intentionally with One City Peterborough, working as a partner to proactively support governance improvements, clarify expectations, and co-create solutions that balance compassion with accountability. This isn't all or nothing, this doesn't need to be either or, there is a middle ground, and we can acknowledge what's not working without discarding what is working. There is room for compromise, for shared responsibility, and we expect our council to work together, not just to choose sides, but to find solutions. This isn't about choosing fiscal accountability and compassion, it's about recognizing that a functional homelessness response requires both. Thank you for your time.
Jessica, thank you so much for your presentation. There may be some questions. Questions for Jessica? Anybody online has a question for Jessica? Thank you very much for your presentation. The next, the next presenter is Danielle Turpin from the Home Care Workers Cooperative. Danielle, please. If we could have your name and address for the public record?
Danielle Turpin, twelve eighty-eight Bridle Drive. I, can I just make an edit? I'm not here on behalf of my work or business today, this is a personal, thank you.
Just my notes just had that.
I, yes, I apologize for that, I, but I just wanted to clarify.
No apology needed. You have five minutes, mister.
Thank you. I'm, I'm here again tonight, and I want to thank you all, but I'm here again tonight speaking on this issue, because what you decide is going to affect most, hundreds of most of our vulnerable community members, none of whom, in fact, are here to speak to what this may actually mean for them. People do have genuine concerns about homelessness crisis we're facing, about public safety, about not being able to use our parks, for fear a child might sleep on a, slip, step on a needle, about people setting up camps, about the increase in crime that we're seeing in our neighborhood. We're likely going to hear people speak to these various We're likely going to hear people speak to these various issues tonight. And these concerns are valid, and they deserve to be addressed effectively, meaningfully. But with real solutions, not by adding more people to the streets with nowhere to go. Where will the three hundred people One City supporters daily go if the funding is pulled? Where are they going to eat? Where are they going to rest or shower? Where are they going to use the bathroom? Where are they going to sleep at night? The answer is obvious to many of us, but according to the General Committee, it seems like some of this table haven't truly considered that. These people don't disappear. They don't magically get off drugs and find housing. They're going to end up in our parks, in our alleys, in our best shelters, and ultimately, sadly, some may end up in our morgues. Defending Trinity is going to lead to more people using drugs in public. More people sleeping on sidewalks, more crime, more complaints, more tents in parks with no legal means to remove them. And whether you like it or not, Trinity is a place, a lifeline, I'd add, for most of our marginalized and displaced neighbors. Oops, sorry. You take that away, and you actually increase the very problems people are upset about. And no matter where you stand on One City, one thing is clear. Defunding it is not the solution. Especially when there's been no other alternatives put forward. I'd also like to remind council that charter violations are not hypothetical here. This council is already playing fast and loose with the law when it comes to disingenuously setting up temporary shelters for five days. Knowing full well that people will have nowhere to go after that. And there's case law. That has shown that when governments remove funding for life-saving services like shelter or harm reduction. It can violate section seven of our charter, which is the right to life and security of the person. If people are being pushed into the streets with increased risk of exposure, overdose, assault, and death, and that outcome is foreseeable, which it is. Then your vote tonight may be in breach of section seven. There's section fifteen of the charter, which is the right to equal protection under the law without discrimination. Right now, the Peterborough outside of Trinity Services has only twelve shelter beds, all shelter beds for women. Zero shelter beds for women with physical disabilities. Zero beds for trans and non-binary people, zero beds set aside for indigenous people. Defunding Trinity, the only all-gender low-barrier shelter in Peterborough, will disproportionately harm these protected groups. And that could be a violation under section fifteen. So what does this all look like in real life? It means women returning to abusers. It means more people living on the streets, in their cars, in an unsafe conditions. It means indigenous people will be further displaced by society when we should be focusing on reconciliation. It means trans, non-binary community will be subjected to more discrimination and anti-trans hate. It means that these groups are forced back to the streets. They will be at higher risk of assault, abuse. Rape and death over any other demographic. That is systemic discrimination. So let's be honest about whether this what this decision really means, at least for the most vulnerable among us. And yes and no, I know that municipalities can't fix homelessness unknown, and Peterborough is no exception. We absolutely need to be pushing for provincial and federal support. But while we wait. People are still going to be hungry. People are still going to need shelter, and they're still going to need our support. Please keep Trinity funded while you push for more detox beds. While you push for more rehab options, more transitional and affordable housing, we absolutely can do both. So to you're not actually just voting on a budget line. You're voting on people's lives. You're voting to either keep them in one place with the supports they need, or to further displace the most vulnerable among us. If you defund Trinity, real people are going to suffer, real people will die. And those who suffer most will be the ones who we already fail. Women, indigenous people, racialized groups, and trans and non-binary folks. So I want you to vote tonight to protect their rights under the charter. And vote tonight to make sure everyone has a place to sleep. Thank you.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Turpin. There may be some questions. Counselor Lucchica, please.
Uh, thank you, Danielle, for for coming tonight. Um. You know, listening to the various delegations, um, it's really remarkable the analyses that is coming forth and. Um, appreciate your um elevating the individuals that that are served through Trinity. Um, to a human level and that there are human rights pieces that we need to be reflecting on. Um, and that we need not be so myopic, but that we step back from the canvas. And think about the long-term systemic issues that we are impacting positively or negatively. By the decisions that we make tonight. So so thank you for that sobering message. It's not easy to hear these things, but this is not an easy topic. So um your strength and your courage for bringing this up is important. Um, my question is, with with the analyses that you do bring. Um. What do you have? It feels like you have a deep connection to um, you know, the the Trinity environment, to the to the individuals that Trinity serves. Can you speak anything to that in terms of your motivation for sharing what you have tonight? Thank you very much, Your Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Lucchica. Um, yes, I I do, actually. Um, and I'll speak to that very briefly. When I've been a volunteer at One Trinity Trinity, and I've had an amazing experience getting to know. Many of the guests who use the services there. Um, but not only from the perspective of someone coming in to volunteer. I have family member, dear loved one, who is. Been um dealing with homelessness um off and on for many years. Um, and I will speak to something that's really important here in regards to this individual, but this is actually I'm speaking to. All of you here. I think before we make this decision tonight. I'm wondering if we can really take a second to actually think about whether we all agree. If homeless is housing is an actual right. And if mental health care and health care is a right. Because if we all agree and we all say yes to that, then that needs to inform your decision tonight. Right? The only other option, the only other alternative that's happening, if you say it's not, is that somehow addiction, mental health. And homelessness. From this perspective, if you vote no, is that it's a moral failure. We all know it's not. And so this, when you're to answer your question, um, Counselor Lucchica, my nephew has also been using for the last. Quite some time now, the last year. Using the services of Brock, and I speak to this, and I'm going to speak honestly here. Last time at General Committee, I heard several councillors speak of Trinity being a bad apple. I also heard of several councillors speaking about the push for Brock's um support, more funding. Um, and that that somehow is being held as the gold standard. Of of shelter and social supports. During that time that my nephew was in this in the care. He was medicalized and hospitalized five times. Due to drug medical emergencies. Five times. That's with the rules in place with Brock. That's with the rules in place at Trinity, or sorry, at uh the transitional housing. He almost died twice and was ventilated twice. I'm wondering sometimes if that happened um because the rules were in place. So the argument to me is. Trinity and One City has a place because these people aren't able to access. Those gold standards that you guys speak of. They're not able to use those services. I want a place that's going to be safe for everybody. And then maybe we can use that as those transitional steps, right? Um, and then when you keep on pushing for more funding uh and more supports. Ideally, we'll live in a community where we don't need any of these, right? Thank you very much for sharing that. Thank you, Your Chair.
Thank you.
Any uh any further members? Uh, we have uh Counselor Burke, please, online. Counselor Burke?
Um, Mayor Lille, thank you so much. Um. You know, and through you, I think, before I ask my question to the delegate, to Ms. Turpin. Um, I think it's just important to acknowledge that. Um, while shelter spaces can be on the front lines of addiction and mental health. Issues and and health issues in general, um, that um specifically with Trinity, they're only being funded. Um, by the city as a drop-in space and overnight shelter. There's no funding um. Through us that has been given to them to provide any sort of treatment or care for um addiction or mental health. Um, my my question through you, Mayor Lille, to Ms. Turpin, um. Danielle, thank you so much for coming and speaking. Uh, again, um. I know that you're really engaged i- in this issue. Um. You know, I was sort of surprised by our decision. Last week to sort of defund and. To go back on the expansion of this service that council supported last year. Um, are you aware of any other cities and any other municipalities that um? Are actually decreasing their homelessness-serving. Programs and spaces because I'm not. Um, mostly what I'm reading. Is that cities like Kingston and Toronto um and Hamilton are working to increase. Their capacity for those shelter systems.
Mr. Turpin, please.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I think I uh, Counselor Burke, I think I would agree with you on that. I don't know of any specific cities. I'm not an expert in this. Um, but I think what I'm hearing when I'm speaking to other uh people who are living in different municipalities or working with these municipalities. Is that they're looking at a little bit more creative ways to expand on um the existing services, to kind of remove some of the silos. Um, with some of the other organizations, so they can start working a little bit more collaboratively. Which will, in in essence, actually become more efficient as well. Um, so I'm seeing a more collaborative approach. Uh, a more broad approach to what uh this types of supports are in certain cities. Um, and I think it's something that Peterborough can definitely do uh very well.
Um, thank you so much. And uh through Mayor Lille, you know, um. When we talk about. Shelters, you know, people and the the critics of providing sites like this talk about um the visibility of homelessness. They talk about the belongings. Um, they talk about a lot of things that make them feel uncomfortable. Um, in your estimation, what would happen um if we lost this service, this essential service that is um? Um, you know, through the report, you see the numbers is reaching so many people. What will that? How will that feel for community members um who are already critical of? The sort of visibility of homelessness and how uncomfortable that makes them feel?
Mr. Turpin, please.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, I I mean, I'll just be frank. I think everybody, all of these people that uh Trinity serves. Um, we're going to see more and more people back into our community. So the people who are um critical of what's going on, the people who are complaining, understandably so. Complaining about a rise in crime or uh drug use, uh not being able to access our libraries. I just. Do not understand where they think these people are going to go if we remove this funding. This is going to increase the problem. It's not going to make this go away. Whether we like it or not, we will not make this go away. By decreasing the funding to support these individuals and support the organizations who are supporting these individuals. So it will get worse. Um, crime will go up. I think we're going to see more and more drug deaths and O Ds, hospital, hospital uh visits will increase. I think the cost of paramedics and community services are going to go up. The city I could see would have no choice but to have to staff outreach workers themselves because they're going to have to manage this somehow. I could see your budget for maintenance and cleaning would have to go up because you are going to get calls. You think you get calls now, you wait. Wait, because it will get worse.
Mayor Lille, thank you very much. Thank you, Danielle.
Thanks, Counselor Burke. Any further questions for uh Mr. Turpin? Mr. Turpin, thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Jennifer Lacy, please. Jennifer? Jennifer, if you give us your name and address for the public record, and you'll have five minutes to make a presentation. Welcome.
Hi. My name is Jennifer Lacy, and my address is seven hundred Park Hill Road West. Thank you for providing me with the opportunity to speak today and to provide my perspective regarding the life-saving health care. That the services at Trinity provide. I have a unique perspective in the sense that I used to work in Peterborough as frontline in child welfare. I have seen children no longer being able. To see their parents because their parents have passed away. I now work in the healthcare setting in a rural community where there are no resources such as Trinity. I have reviewed the Trinity Community Center annual report and have noted certain services provided that I believe have a positive impact. There is the ID and tax clinic with access to O H I P cards. Renewing O H I P card may seem like an easy task, but it's not. Although someone without a valid O H I P card would still receive medical treatment, there would be a cost to this. There is a charge of three hundred and ninety seven dollars simply to walk through the doors at the emergency emergency department. This doesn't include labs, imaging tests, or physician fees. The cost for a hospital bed, if admitted, ranges from a thousand to thirteen hundred dollars a day. And a person without a valid O H I P card would be billed these charges. So this service provides people an opportunity to ensure they have equitable health care. While also ensuring that healthcare system is not left with a large outstanding bill. There is the wound assessment treatment services with the Community Paramedicine Program. By having a paramedic check on wounds, this will help catch an infection before it becomes life-threatening. Some treatments for extensive wound infections can include IV antibiotics for regular dressing changes. These treatments would not be managed outside of a hospital setting. As the person treated, we need to either A, have a home, so that home care could visit them, or B, have transportation to go to a clinic. This community lowers hospital visits and medical acuity. I do want to highlight the following statistic. From twenty twenty four to twenty twenty five. There were thirty eight drug poisoning interventions, which is a sixty nine percent decrease. This has a direct impact on the community as it lowers first responders' need to respond, which provides them availability. To respond to other emergency and lowers the amount of people requiring medical treatment. The result is that it lowers times, wait times at hospitals, and less people die. I'd also like to review the staffing costs. I've never spoken um with anyone at Trinity regarding staffing costs. But given my experiences in my career of working in group homes, frontline in child welfare. And now in healthcare, these are the main stressors for staffing costs. Staff and client safety. I imagine that working in an environment where there are high-risk situations, staff should probably. Probably not be left alone. It's not uncommon for institutions such as hospital correctional facilities and group homes to provide upstaffing. If providing service to someone who is high risk. And the cost for upstaffing in institutions would be much higher compared to Trinity. Also, the cost of living. Workers deserve a living wage. And the staff at Trinity provide life-saving health care and are paid a fraction of what any health care provider earns. As a former frontline worker, having a space like Trinity would have been very beneficial for me to do my work effectively. Rather than spending many hours or even days trying to find my client, I would be able to know where they are and that they're alive. And this is cost-effective for other community agencies other than Trinity in order to support their clients. When working with my current clients, I regularly hear how the healthcare system is just inadequate. And my response is always the same. This is the only system we have, so we need to find a way to make it work. And in my opinion, that is exactly what the city staff report regarding this matter was doing. Finding a way to make it work. It's not perfect, and it won't solve all the problems, but it'll provide opportunities for people to have their basic needs met. In order to allow time for more. Long-lasting solutions to be created, and it will save lives. Thank you.
Thank you very much, um, Jennifer. There may be some questions. Questions for Jennifer. Counselor Lucchica.
Thank you, Your Chair. Jennifer, thank you for coming tonight, and so good to hear from a host of voices and different perspectives. And and the fact that you've brought forward, um, you know, Trinity as a provider. Um, as furnishing that equitable health component. For for folks. And again, something that we may not think about uh at first and upfront, but. But, you know, equitable health and equity. Really does mean that we're providing what people need because equity does not mean that we all get the same thing, but we get what we need. And um it sounds like you're feeling that that Trinity is is hitting that spot of meeting. Um, a a a host of folks with a variety of different needs uh in in a way that meets that need. Um, how did you connect with Trinity as a provider? Is it is it um? Is it mainly through your background in 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 healthcare that that has? Um, just pricked up your ears and and motivated you to speak so passionately tonight?
That's essentially been my motivation with my previous career in child welfare. Those services have saved parents' lives that I've worked with. Simply just going for even community meals because eating is healthcare. And if you don't have access to food consistently, you're going to become ill. And so it's really, that's been my motivation is because I know families I've worked with probably wouldn't be able to come up and speak, so that's why I'm here.
Thank you for bringing forth the child piece and contingency, the domino effect, and the importance of what Trinity can do to help preserve families. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Welcome. Any further questions for Jennifer? Anybody online have a question for Jennifer? That's it, good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next presenter is Ashley Safer from the Peterborough Community Health Centre. Ashley, please. If we could have your name and address for the public record. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Leo and councillors. My name is Ashley Safar and I'm the Executive Director of the Peterborough Community Health Centre at 360 George Street North. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. As a community governed primary care organization, our mission is to improve the health and wellbeing of people facing the deepest inequities. People who are homeless, low income, indigenous, racialized, and living with disabilities. I'm here tonight to speak to the decision not to continue providing funding for the Trinity Overnight Drop-In Program and to operate at current service levels beyond March 2026, as well as the expanded daytime hours. I know you hear often about homelessness, and I also know there can be a lot of frustration around costs and complexity. But these programs are not simply nice to have. They are essential infrastructure that prevents human suffering, saves lives, and reduces costs in other parts of the system. Let me start by sharing some clear evidence. The 2024 Cross-Sectorial Roadmap for Change, led by the Research for Social Change Lab, documents that many, what many of us have seen firsthand. Since 2018, there has been a 350% increase in people living outdoors in Peterborough. This year, Trinity saw 522 unique people using the overnight program, an average of 47 people every night, exceeding capacity. Every month, more than 30 new people came through the door for the first time. And 166 people were turned away due to lack of space. I also want to address the concern for the number of indigenous people accessing Trinity and suggestions that the federal government should be providing this funding. It's important to recognize that the over-representation of indigenous people experiencing homelessness is not coincidental. It's a direct result of the ongoing impacts of colonialism, systemic discrimination, and intergenerational trauma. It is disheartening to hear suggestions that this is not the city's responsibility. When municipalities signal that the needs of indigenous residents fall outside their jurisdiction, it reinforces the very exclusion and marginalization that have contributed to these inequities. Indigenous people are community members, neighbors, and citizens of the city. Addressing their needs is not a matter of jurisdiction. It's a matter of justice, reconciliation, and shared humanity. While this over-representation must be acknowledged and addressed, we cannot lose sight of the broader crisis. Homelessness in our community affects people from all walks of life. These are not numbers on a report. These are residents of Peterborough with nowhere else to go. The city's own report is clear. Failure to invest the $1,050,000 for 2026 will significantly compromise the city's ability to respond to homelessness. So why does this matter to the CHC, the Community Health Centre? Because when people lose access to low-barrier spaces like Trinity, emergency room visits increase at a higher cost to taxpayers. Encampments grow, creating visible distress, conflict, and cost to bylaw and policing. Outreach and healthcare engagement decline, making it harder to stabilize and house people. Evidence from the Alliance for Healthier Communities and the Federal Housing Advocate is clear. Low-barrier harm reduction-focused services are among the most effective tools we have to protect public health and connect people to housing. At the Community Health Centre, we've invested in resources to be part of the solution. We've collaborated with One City and other community partners to deliver primary care and mental health supports where people already are. Our team works daily to engage people who often won't or can't access traditional health and social services. We do this because it works and because it's more effective and more compassionate than constant crisis response. These reductions also risk eroding critical and effective community partnerships and positive rapport and relationships with community members, including the ones already built at Trinity and the Peterborough Community Health Centre. Stability and trust, which take time and effort to build, are being placed at risk by short-term decisions. Equally important is the need for evidence-based and equity-oriented decision-making. We are calling on council to commit to frameworks that reflect evidence on what works to reduce homelessness, equity in addressing the needs of those most marginalized, and a recognition that not all services are accessible to everyone and that low-barrier models help close that gap. Finally, I want to be very clear. This decision will not make homelessness disappear. It will only make it more visible, more desperate, and more costly in other systems. For example, the moral building encampment response alone came with a significant cost in policing and cleanup as a very short-term measure. This council can support funding a proactive winter homelessness response plan to maintain safe, warm, low-barrier overnight space all winter. In closing, I ask council to reconsider the funding decision and prioritize continuity of service, commit to an equity-informed and evidence-based approach in all future decisions related to homelessness response, and recognize low-barrier services as a critical part of the solution, not a temporary stopgap. Our Community Health Centre remains committed to working collaboratively with the city and other community partners to build solutions rooted in evidence, compassion, and shared responsibility. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Ashley. There could be some questions for you. Questions for Ashley? Anybody online has a question for Ash? Councillor Burke, please.
Mayor Leo, thank you through you to Ms. Safar. Thank you so much for coming. We heard one of the previous delegates talk about like metrics on how, you know, you would quantify a successful emergency shelter. And isn't, isn't, isn't really the only metric or one of the only important metrics, like the amount of people that access the service? You know, our, our systems that are in place for people to transition out of, out of these emergency situations are full. So maybe you can help me understand and the public understand what, what would be some positive outcomes of a service like this? From your perspective and, you know, in your opinion and reading the information in the report and from One City, are they meeting, or is it, is it, is there a service benefiting those people in our community that are unhoused?
Ashley, please.
Thank you. Thank you councillor Burke. I do think that One City as an organization as a whole has done really great work. And I've had lots of opportunities to work closely with One City and Trinity in my current role and also in previous roles. I think that one of the missing pieces here tonight, as Ms. Turpin mentioned, is that the very people we're talking about and asking you to make decisions about aren't here tonight to speak to this decision or how this will impact them. I know based on conversations with people who are experiencing homelessness and who are marginalized and who are struggling with mental health and addiction's challenges, is that it's a full-time job to think about where you're going to sleep at night, where your next meal is going to come from. You know, to think about employment, to think about finding housing, to fill out a form. Those are all really big deals, things that you and I take for granted as something very easy to do. We have the resources. We have a computer. We have internet. We have a phone. A lot of people don't have those resources. And so One City also provides those connection points. And that's exactly what we're trying to do with the CHC in collaboration with One City and at Trinity. And so we've invested in providing and creating collaboratively a clinical space where we can support the paramedic team that's already in there, as well as the street medicine team who, who provides some support there to really increase our resources and services. Part of what the CHC does is primary healthcare. But the other aspect of what we provide is allied health through social work, through health, health promoters and systems navigators, and indigenous health equity and wellness coordinators to be able to meet the needs of people beyond their primary care. We look at healthcare from a very holistic perspective. And so recognizing that the most marginalized, the people who have the most challenges accessing those very systems, that we're really expecting them to be able to navigate on their own is something that One City provides, but also provides through their partnerships with the CHC, with Forecast, with CMHA, with other organizations who are constantly working to collaboratively provide support. And so I hope that answered your question, councillor Burke.
Councillor Burke?
Yeah, thank, thank you so much. And through the chair. So what you're saying and what, what you laid out for us is, is a good point is that by the city investing in a program and infrastructure like this, it has spurred on investment beyond what the city is providing.
Exactly, yes.
Amazing. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. You have my support.
Thank you.
Councillor Chico, please.
Thank you very much through you, Chair. To Ashley, it's wonderful to see you here. And we can't thank you enough for bringing such a voice of health leadership. The Community Health Centre being able to, to raise awareness and bring voice to indigenous issues around healthcare and reminding us what our responsibility is. You know, especially if we've, as we've just honored June as Indigenous History Month. And every, every week in council, we do a land acknowledgement. And we are on Treaty 20 territory. And we are serving communities, and we need to remember our responsibility in the 94 Calls to Reconciliation and how the decisions we're making tonight actually align with those calls, calls to action. So, so thank you for that reminder because sometimes we get so involved in our business that, that we fail to acknowledge the most important thing. So, so thank you for that reality check tonight. And my question is this. How can the city do better? We have a community safety and wellbeing plan that the, that the city and county has created that actually speaks to the importance of an organization, a provider like Trinity. What more can the city do now? You know, as we have a wonderful community health center, as we're starting to align services and agencies and to make progress that we've heard about tonight, how can the city do better right now? Do you have any words of advice for us? Thank you.
Ashley, please.
Thank you. Yeah, meaningful engagement. I think that's a big piece that's missing. And, you know, speaking, you know, as the Executive Director of the Community Health Centre is a very new role for me. I've been in the role since January. As you know, it's a new organization. Prior to that, I worked at the Friendship Centre as the Executive Director. And on multiple occasions, we've tried to reach out to the city to develop strong relationships and to ensure meaningful representation, especially of urban indigenous community members. I know the city has strong relationships and with the local First Nations. And while that's important, the relationship with urban indigenous community members is equally as important and, and comes with different accountability. And so I would urge the city to think about what those relationships look like with the urban indigenous community and think about engagement and meaningful engagement, collaborative engagement, to, to think about the next step forward and to move forward in a good way together. That would be my advice, and I would love to be part of those conversations.
Thank you for that, Ashley, and we would hope to do that. Thank you very much, Chair.
Any more questions? Councillor Real, please.
Through the chair to Ashley. Comments are made all the time about the people that we're servicing. Might be a very unfair question to you. And I happen to talk to quite a few of these people. And the comment is that if we build it, more people will come. People that I talk to are people that have fallen in hard times. They're from the city. And this is whether it's urban indigenous, whether it's people that have migrated in from the county. But the ones that I talk to that regularly that are panhandling because they don't have enough money, people that have lived in the city their whole life. Is that what you're finding?
Yes.
Ashley, please.
Yes, most people are from the city of Peterborough. They're not moving here because we have exceptionally great resources to offer. That's just not, not the reality. People are from here, have spent most of their lives here and have fallen on hard times and have no other options or feel they have no other options. That's what we're hearing is that we need to do better to meaningfully engage and ensure that there's, you know, meaningful representation from people who are experiencing challenges around homelessness, accessing Trinity and other social service organizations and healthcare organizations to better understand how we move forward and what we do next.
Through the chair to Ashley, are you seeing a higher number of seniors coming to you for help? I received a call last week from a couple that was 76 and 70 that had lost their housing and wanted to know if I could find them housing. This is somebody that's 76 and 70 years old. Are you seeing a lot of seniors in this precarious position?
Yeah, we have had some, some seniors. Apologies. I'm new at this. We have had some seniors seeking services from the CHC. As a new organization, we're still very much in a phase of getting to know the community. And that's what we've really done through our collaboration too with One City is finding opportunities with lots of different community members as well as organizations to get a sense of what the gaps are. We never want to come in and make an assumption of what we need to do and how we're going to do it. We want to be responsive to what the community needs are. And so that's really what we've, we've, we've tried to do. And we have heard from seniors in the community who are, who are facing challenges, especially around things like housing, which is a really, a difficult space to navigate. Housing is not something that the CHC is primarily taking on, but is supporting through our allied health to make connections to other community resources. We are currently engaged in an environmental scan to get a better sense of what those organizations are doing and get a better sense of people who are engaging with the CHC and what their, their primary concerns and needs are so that we can develop a very holistic plan that not only focuses on the physical and mental health aspect, but also their spiritual and emotional well-being as well in, in looking at the whole person and being person-centered in that, in that, in that way. So, but yes, in short, we have had some engagement from seniors who live in this community who are also struggling with, with housing and, and with a number of challenges. Yeah, so I hope that answers your question. Thank you.
Councillor Burke, please, online.
Mayor Leo, thank you. And through you to Ms. Safar. My question is actually around the CHC. I'm wondering if you could please speak to the impacts that this reduction in service will have on the clinic.
Ashley, please.
Yeah, so as I said, one of our priorities right now is really building positive relationships in community and recognizing as a new organization, we, we don't have those relationships built, especially with folks who are, who are racialized, marginalized, oppressed, and who may not have a trust in, in coming and walking through the doors. And so we know that we need to be where the people are. We know that we need to collaborate with folks like Trinity to be able to be there and meet people where they're at, to be able to assess wounds, to be able to do assessment work, and to create relationships in the hopes that they will walk through the CHC, building their own capacity as individuals and expanding some of the resources that are available to them. And so we really need to ensure though that those relationships are our starting point. And, and that's why we've invested in Trinity and, and why we want to be there, to be where the people are and to get a sense of who they are and who, and for us to share who we are and build that relationship and rapport to increase their access to resources. And so not being able to do that will have a huge impact on our outreach efforts and ability to, to seek those people out if they're not in a space and they're, you know, wandering the community as a whole makes it much more difficult to engage in that work.
Thank you very much.
Any further questions for Ashley? Ashley, I have a question. Have you ever had any meetings with Shelley Knott, Art's city Peterborough's Indigenous advisor?
Yes, I have. Yes. So I know Shelley. I do participate in the Indigenous Working Group that's recently started. And prior to Shelley, you know, coming into the role with the city, I worked closely with Ree Malley to think about reconciliation efforts and, and building collaborative relationships with the city of Peterborough. So I look forward to being part of this new working group and continuing to expand those relationships. But I do think there still is more that needs to be done in terms of meaningful engagement, not just from the Indigenous specific hire, but from others in other areas as well.
My sense is that Indigenous Services Canada, which is the federal agency, has very little presence at Peterborough. Would, would that be a fair assessment?
Um, I mean, I can only speak to, you know, my understanding.
In terms of funding envelopes or?
In terms of funding envelopes, yes, potentially, yes, you could say that. There could be a lot more, and I'm not disagreeing with you in terms of, you know, thinking that there is a responsibility from federal and provincial government to, to, you know, to strengthen relationships with indigenous community. But it's also very much a municipal issue as well.
I had that conversation with MP Harrison in a meeting last week about Indigenous Services Canada.
Yeah.
Any, any further questions? Thank you very much for being with us this evening.
Perfect. Thank you. Me gosh.
Next, online. Next online, we have Dr. Thomas Piggott, Halliburton, Corther, Northumberland, Peterborough Public Health. Dr. Piggott, please.
Hello?
Go ahead, Dr. Piggott.
Good evening. Thank you very much, Mayor and Council. You can hear me okay?
Sure, can.
Great. So with apologies that I couldn't join you in person tonight, I've just stepped out of the emergency department, bad timing with the, the one shift a month I still help out and it's very busy. Would have loved to have been there with you in person and appreciate you hearing my delegation tonight. I speak to you, so Thomas Piggott, 185 King Street, first of all, and I speak to you as, as the Medical Officer of Health for our community. I speak to you as a physician who had worked with Peterborough Street Medicine and treated many of the folks who were in the house who have accessed Trinity's services. And I speak to you as a resident of the community. And I, and I want to speak in the, the latter representative perspective first and just share some appreciation for the leadership you, Mayor and Council are providing for the community at a very, very challenging time with very vexing, sometimes quite polarizing issues. And I think, I think it's difficult and I'll speak to some of the health perspectives, but I, I understand and empathize with the challenging considerations you have to bring together in order to make very difficult decisions for our community. As I start though, I, I want to take a brief moment actually just to, to say a big thank you and appreciation. On a personal level, my family and I have really appreciated living here in this, this beautiful vibrant community. We recently had a experience with a city service. This dates back to kind of the origins of public health, but we had a challenge with city sewage and it was resolved in, in remarkable ways and very quickly, very efficiently. And so I want to thank members of council, I want to thank all of the city staff that are doing hard work day in, day out. I, I know it's hard work and I just wanted to take that, that opportunity because these are difficult conversations we're having, difficult moments. And I think, I think when people are faced with difficult moments, we can, we can fall further apart, we can come closer together. And certainly as a resident of the community, I hope, I hope the latter. But I also think about the quote that we've probably all heard from Mahatma Gandhi, that the true measure of any society can be found in how it treats its most vulnerable members. And, and so that's with, with that lens, why I wanted to speak to you a bit about the, the critical service that the Trinity and One City provide for daytime programming and shelter from the elements and the health impacts if this programming is canceled or decreased. I think at a, a medical level, certainly having seen a number of the individuals, we know heat and cold are deadly and shelter from them at a very basic level. Beyond all of the services that are provided to try to help to turn the page for folks that are struggling and suffering is critical. And this is, this is literally an issue of life and limb. Peterborough Public Health has been collaborating with the Provincial Coroner Service and collecting data on the number of deaths experienced among community members in Peterborough who are unhoused. And what we saw from 2023 to 2024 was a doubling of the number of deaths. And so this is a significant crisis. And I wanted to share tragically, we've identified at least 47 individuals over the three years from 2021 Q4 to 2024 Q4 who have died and are experiencing homelessness. And that is a significant number, but it's also likely very under reported because the Coroner Service only investigates some 20% of deaths. And so there are probably many more people who we do not know of. One of the most common drivers of these deaths is exposure, injuries and elements, all of which are higher when people are sleeping unhoused and outside. The, the other perspective I want to share is one, one of an economic argument. I'm working here in the very, very busy emergency department tonight. The healthcare system is trying and struggling to respond to the needs of an increasing homelessness crisis. And I commend healthcare providers who are doing great work. However, you know, the health system is not the way to house people. Housing and shelter is the way to house people. And unfortunately, when those options are not available, the costs at a health system level are tremendous. So a statistics I want, I wanted to share with, with you, Mayor and Council is that according to the Canadian Institute for Health Information, KIHI, the average cost of one individual experiencing homelessness into the health system in Canada is $17,000, a number that surpasses just for several day short admission, the cost of housing somebody for an entire year. And certainly if you think about the number of people experiencing chronic homelessness in the community and accessing Trinity, very quick math on potentially 339 people chronically unhoused accessing services, if we were to save but one hospital admission for those individuals per year, that the savings on the health system could be well in excess of $5 million. And so this is also, I think, a quite cost effective solution because if we end up having to treat folks with frostbite, with heat exhaustion, heat, a stroke, the costs from the healthcare perspective are significant. I also think from the perspective of.
Dr. Piggott, your time is up, but I'll, I'll give you a bit of latitude here.
Okay, I'll finish up and, and I'll just finish by saying, I, I think about yesterday in Canada Day and the significant project that is Canada, the work that we need to do on reconciliation. This is an issue that relates to an overrepresented Indigenous population, but also to, you know, the long history of our country and rising to significant challenges. And I think of my late grandfather who was in World War II and to, to see us responding to several hundred people unhoused in our community and saying, there's nothing more we can do, we can't do this, I think would be very disappointing. And, and to me, I think there are very clear solutions. Trinity is not a silver bullet, but it's a clear part of the solution. And I, I really implore council to think about the support for this cost effective solution that will save lives for vulnerable members of our community and appreciate the chance to speak with you tonight.
Thanks very much, Dr. Piggott. There could be some questions. Counselor, Counselor Real and Counselor Burke. Counselor Real, please.
Through the chair to Dr. Piggott. Thomas, thank you very much for being here tonight. Couple of sobering facts that you give here tonight was the cost of unhoused people and the use of our hospital system. That number is just staggering what you just gave us tonight. So can you expand a bit on that, you know, $5 million as opposed to 17, you know, what it was, what it's costing us just to house somebody in a shelter system?
Thank, thank you. I didn't hear you, Chair. Sorry. May I? Through you, Chair.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Through you, Chair. Thank you for the question, Counselor Real. So, so I'm drawing on the data from KIHI, the national data from KIHI that indicates that the average cost for hospital admission is $17,000 per person per admission. When somebody who is unhoused is admitted to the hospital, the cost of workup test and then timely discharge is very complicated. It's very difficult to just discharge somebody back onto the street when they're still recovering. And so simply doing the math on individuals who are chronically unhoused in this community, drawing from access data from Trinity and the point in time count. If you, if you simply prevented one hospital admission, and we heard from a delegate earlier in the evening that many individuals experiencing chronic homelessness have many hospital admissions for health issues per year. You know, the, the costs on the healthcare system are clearly in excess of five, 5.7 million dollars was my specific math estimating that. And so I think we need to be thinking about these figures. Small preventative investments that, you know, are, are not insignificant, especially at a tough fiscal time for the city, but are, are going to pay dividends in return to preventing the downstream consequences.
Through the chair to Dr. Piggott, another statistic you give us that was 47 deaths and there could be more that of people that run sheltered and certainly that number to me, one death is too many. But, and we hear, you know, and I've heard it said, we spend enough money or it's an imposition on our taxpayers. Do you have any other further words on that? The numbers you said could be higher than 47. It's just the statistics you have right now.
Dr. Piggott, please.
Thank you. Through you, Chair, Mayor, and thank you again for the follow up questions. So in 20, in 20, in the last four quarters up until the end of 2024, there were 20 individuals who died and that was a doubling from the average from the couple of years before that. We don't have data before 2021. And so again, from Q4 2021 to Q4 2024, there were at least 47 deaths in individuals who are unhoused. I agree with you on a, on a personal level that even one is, is tragic and is unnecessary. And in many of these cases, there, you know, there may have been an impact of a lack of shelter. We know a lack of shelter and heat or, or extreme cold is deadly. I think certainly consciously, you know, avoiding any that we can and ensuring that people do have this most basic need of shelter is critical for this community. I would say again, 47 deaths is probably a low end estimate, given that the coroner only investigates about 20% of deaths. And, and this to me is, is tragic and a significant number in our community, one that, you know, years ago, when homelessness was much more rare in this community, would have been front page news day in, day out. And so I, I really implore a council to consider the impact and consider the life saving opportunity to continue to support access to a critical service.
Thank you for being here.
Counselor Burke, please.
Thank you, Mayor Leal, and, and through you to Dr. Piggott. Thomas, thank you so much for your perspective on this. My question to you is about, you know, you, you went over the cost effectiveness of, of, you know, supporting this or not supporting this and that there's a cost, a cost attached. You know, the problem doesn't just go away, there's a cost attached to this if we don't deal with it. Were you surprised like I was when you read the report and you saw that for only a $300,000 investment per year, we were able, Trinity, One City was able to provide a warming space for 40 people?
Dr. Piggott?
Thank you. Through you, Chair. Thanks for the question, Counselor Burke. I mean, I'm not in the business of providing shelter space. I know it's pretty bootstrapped and stretches every single dollar that's given. I mean, if you think about again, $17,000 to house somebody in the hospital for just a, a short hospital stay, you know, shelter space, I would say is not a dignified end state solution, right? I don't think we should be anchoring on this. I think everyone, you know, speaking as, as a person, as a resident of the community, I think everyone should have access to, to decent housing and I hope that we can do more to solve that crisis. And I think council's doing a lot to think about that kind of end state solution and affordability of housing generally. You know, this is not obviously a luxurious solution. This is stretching every dollar and bootstrapping response to crisis. I've been to Trinity many times myself. I know the folks that are providing services. I know many of the folks that are accessing services. And I think, you know, given, given the crisis and given the magnitude of need, they're stretching every dollar that they can to help to essentially, you know, save lives by housing people and keeping people off the street and into shelter. I, yeah, I mean, again, I empathize with a challenging decision here and I've talked to business owners and folks in the community that have seen other concerns. But again, I, I hope that we can come together as a community around solutions and, and support the most vulnerable in our community, the true measure of, of our society perhaps.
Thank you very much.
Anything further, Counselor Burke?
No, thank you.
Counselor Pardell, please. Counselor Pardell.
Thank you. And through you, Mayor Leal. Thank you, Dr. Piggott, for joining us this evening. Based on what you've said, can, could you please tell us if you support the idea and the proposal for McNabb House on Chumong Road, which is transitional housing for men and women, disabled folks and some palliative units as proposed by Brock Mission that would be run by Brock Mission? Do you support that?
Point of order. Pardon me, I'm not, I don't like to interrupt, but, but this is, this is not pertinent to the, the delegation.
And Dr. Piggott talked about transitional housing.
But, but McNabb House is something that's in litigation right now and, and should not be discussed and brought forward in, in this fashion because of that.
There could be a general question though on transitional housing, not the specific site that's subject to litigation.
If I may, through you, Chair, it, it's not germane to the, to the report that's being delegated on. And so if, if you're, you're not in agreement, I would like to challenge the Chair and, and ask Commissioner Potts, if I may, if it's appropriate to be discussing McNabb House right now when, when, when that is something that the city, there's litigation involving the city.
Mr. Potts, please. We'll defer to Mr. Potts on this.
Thank you, Your Worship. A legal proceeding has been commenced. The theory of the case is unclear. So as a blanket statement to say no discussion, that's really the, the call of the Chair, subject to the procedure by law. Thank you.
Counselor Pardell, you should probably rephrase your question and not, not reference a.
The address?
A legal case. You could ask a general question about transitional housing, which Dr. Piggott did mention.
Okay, you know, fair enough. So Dr. Piggott, do you support transitional housing by a trusted provider that has security supports and, and rules that will help men and women, disabled persons and some palliative supportive units?
Dr. Piggott, please. I want to move on. So Dr. Piggott?
Yeah, no, I mean, briefly, I think these are complex decisions and the location, whether we're talking about Trinity or any other project, is really complicated and I empathize with the, the community and the, you know, businesses around different sites. I think we need to roll up our sleeves and do everything we can in different areas and different ways and at different parts of the housing continuum. So I'd say maybe I'll, I'll stay there. And that was my Canadian answer since we're north of the border and I can't plead the fifth in the states because I understand this is a complex issue. Thanks.
Dr. Piggott, you answered that question very diplomatically. Any further questions for Dr. Piggott? Any, thank you very much, Dr. Piggott.
Thank you, Mayor.
Melissa Hughes. Melissa? If we could have your David address for the public record, you have five minutes. Melissa?
Uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. So my name is Melissa Hughes and my address is 472 Reed Street. First of all, thank you so much for allowing me to have five minutes of your time today and to speak on the One City project that is happening on my street, Reed Street. My husband and his family are urban Indigenous and have lived at our house on Reed Street for over 19 years. I joined them back in 2010 when I relocated from Lindsay back to Peterborough and in 2017, we welcomed our daughter to the family. The only issue we ever really had with living on Reed Street was the speeders going up and down Reed and calling the police to see if they could set up a speed trap to see if they could catch any. Since One City has opened, our lives have changed substantially and not for the better. We consistently have people in and out of our backyard and in our front yard. My mother-in-law actually had somebody enter into her residence at 3:00 AM and took several items. We've seen people all around the community use drugs in the area. My daughter and I no longer go for walks like we used to. My father-in-law, who does not own a cell phone, by the way, has had to install six cameras in effort to protect our property and what is ours. And we do not attend the play park that is located across from the emergency shelter off Reed Street due to the fact that we would have to walk past Trinity. And it seems every time we walk past there, there are things I don't want my eight-year-old to see. My, I believe in supporting local. My odd doctor is located on Charlotte Street. My massage therapist is also on Charlotte Street and my chiropractor. What used to be a five-minute walk for me, I don't even do anymore. I get someone to take me to my appointments as I'm. I get someone to take me to my appointments as I'm scared to walk past. In the past, I've had people yell at me. Sometimes they're belligerent. Sometimes they're undressed, or they're under the influence or intoxicated. I used to love taking my daughter down to Charlotte Pantry on a Friday night to grab snack and pick up some milk, but I refuse to do that with her now. One thing that really hurt me was a few months ago, we had to lay my mother-in-law to rest at Comstock Funeral Home. We had people accost us when we were coming out to the procession line, asking us for change. Comstock has also had to hire security to prevent this. Some people are even trying to solicit the male people in our procession line. And this is so inappropriate and upsetting. My poor single friend lives on Simcoe. She has sent me numerous photos and videos of people in around her area trying to get into her apartment or stashing things behind her house. This is a four complex, and it's all women. I'm one hundred percent on board for not continuing the funding in Trinity, as I feel that the Right to Heal, which is right on Kirk Street, seems to have a different approach, and it seems to be working. Their vision in treatment, sorry, seems to be working. I've also attended the last town hall meeting that was put on by the Peterborough Police that had ward members Joy and Alex in attendance and was advised that calls for service are up substantially. I believe it was seventy percent. And Ward Three is the smallest ward. Now crime is on the rise, calls for fire and ambulance are on the rise, overdoses are on the rise. Many stolen items have been retrieved at Trinity, and in the past three weeks, I know that bikes have been retrieved there. And if you're ever on to catch a car hopper Peterborough, you will see that cell phones and other many expensive items have been lo- located there. It seems most of the members that I see at Trinity have a don't-care attitude. Last week, in broad daylight, we had a lady walk up into our driveway into our backyard. When asked what she was doing, she said, "I can do what I want." I've tried to find reports on One City and how many people have gone to rehab or been given that option. As a local service member from the Lioness and now the Little Lakes Swans, I have over ten years of experience. I've helped with Meals on Wheels and other nonprofit organizations, and I find it difficult to think that this is the only solution and this is the best solution for all. I leave you with this. Imagine you're eight years old. You've had bikes stolen from you? Your hockey bag has been stolen? Hockey sticks, any outdoor toys? Would you feel safe? I want my daughter to feel safe like she did a few years ago. Safe to go back into her backyard without getting startled by a stranger who decided at five thirty to walk in and steal something. Safe to be able to walk over to the park without being flashed by a male who decided to urinate in front of us. Safe to go back to the library to get a book to enhance your learning. Please, for one second, put yourself in my daughter's shoes and my shoes. I agree with what One City promotes. Their mission is being community, is promoting community safety for all. Thank you for your time today, Meg Wetch.
Thank you very much, Melissa. There may be um some questions for Melissa. Any members, uh, anybody on, any members online that have questions for Melissa? Thank you very much for being with us this evening.
Thank you.
The next one, DeTrotter War, please. DeTrotter War? We could have your David address for the public record, please, and five minutes to make a presentation, and welcome.
Sorry, I did it. Second time I ruin it. My name's Danielle. It is Trotter War, and I won't be stating my address. It's caused problems for my family and its extension in the past due to violence. Anybody here in the room who has been here for the last eight years knows exactly who I am, where I was raised, where I went to school for elementary and high school, college, and why I'm here tonight. I brought this book, and I've been dreading being here since I found out about the meeting.
Danielle, could you speak into the mic?
It's useless. It's useless to me to use it. I've been here so many times from my kitchen table through COVID. Standing at this podium, I've faced tantrum, illegitimate claims of calls out of order, people sitting on their phones and staring at them, and like Melissa, I have faced silence in question to remove me and the truth and reality that exists in this city, not embraced by advocacy, to get out of the room as quickly as possible and be silenced. I almost didn't come tonight. I sat in my driveway because I've learned that it is useless to tell the truth. It will be denied. It will be ignored, and there will be accusations of personal attack where recognition of failed policy is what has been stated. I've sat here this evening, and what I can tell you that behind me, in years gone past, the gallery has been full of people, residents of this city like myself, who reside in it and are watching people die in use on city street. I have said it again and again and again, as the numbers on our portals rise, the health-related impacts from addiction and use are documented, and it's meaningless. What I didn't think is that I would walk in tonight to delegates, some behind me still, saying the danger and the threat needs to be ignored to promote what exists. We've failed as a city. As a people, we have failed. The fact that six years in, we have not adapted a policy and embraced the entirety of the voices in this community is a failure that is unforgivable. Those in use and living rough are monumentally important. Their lives, their families, their children, their well-being, as are the lives, the well-being and happiness of those not living rough and in use. It is far past time that this city and the great people in it take a stand in unity, not based on the division that has been created through some members of city staff and council and the advocacy that exists in this city. We are unit as a whole. We are one people. There are truths that need to be told, and they have to stop being denied. Not half-truths, the reality that exists, the truth that is living, is what we have to deal with. There is no person in this city that is deserving of more, whether it be because of their race, their gender, their nationality, their religion, their use, their mental health, or their non-use. Their status as housed or unhoused does not matter. At no point in time should any one and the trouble and trauma that they are facing be be denied in replacement for another fraction of our society. The only way fractions exist is if we create them and we support them. My life, my family's life, is in danger on a daily basis. I am not like the rest of the people behind me here in advocacy, because I will not stand here and drag the names of my loved ones, lost and here, up for recognition of their trauma. I will not trigger them back into it. But what I will tell you is we have failed, and without coming together as a unit in this city, we will continue to cause more harm. We cannot replace the needs and lives with those suffering and enabled addiction with the needs, lives, and safeties of all people in this city. Everyone here is a mature adult, all of us, and none of us are less important than the other. I don't need instruction, but I hear what you're saying. There is no one less. There is no one superior, and there was, there's no one underneath. I'm asking and I'm begging, and I know my time is up. There's never enough time, and that's why the book isn't
Finish your thought.
When are we coming together as a city? And when are the council, city staff, law enforcement, and citizens going to speak out and stand together instead of put a black line down the middle of the road and go nose to nose with no progression and only harm? I don't want to walk out of here tonight like I have over the last eight years with no answers. I have no delusion. There will be no report in the Peterborough Examiner about what I said tonight. There never has been. I doubt that there will be any call or question, because there never has been, just like there wasn't for our first time guest this evening, Melissa. I do beg you to call all the people back that call you, telling you the truths that exist that no one will allow to be heard. Because the people that are dying on the streets matter. And until we all come together to stop that, it's not going to change. I really thank you for your time. If there's questions, I wouldn't imagine there are.
There could be questions. Uh, we do have a question. Counselor Burke online. Counselor Burke, please.
Um, yeah, I just wanted to um through you, Mayor Liel, to thank Ms. Trotter War for her support of the uh report. Thank you.
Uh, Counselor Purnell, please.
Thank you through you, Mayor Liel. Um, I did want to acknowledge Danielle uh for, you know, having it 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 takes a lot uh for citizens to come forward to the the podium, no matter what side of the um the issue you are on, and I do know that um she is extremely compassionate herself in helping people, even though her own family has faced great harm. So Danielle, I would, then this may be a very unfair question. Um, and and you can state so that you don't have the answer tonight. That's fair. Um, but do you have a suggestion on what we should do uh to help? Because I know you really do care, like we do.
My suggestion is honesty. It's truth. It's clarity. It's get rid of the politics and put the people first. The best we've done as a community in my fifty years is when we are a community, not when we're divided like we have been in the last eight years.
Counselor Chica, please.
Thank you, and Danielle, I I just wanted to say thank you as well for for you coming tonight and for um the reminder that we do need to come together uh for solutions. That's much appreciated. Thank you. That's fine.
Could you help me bring this community together? Could you stand beside me between the community, the people in it, and advocacy and council, and help bring to truth exactly what's going on instead of one side putting against the other, please?
I will do my utmost. Thank you.
I look forward to hearing from you so that we can get started.
Thanks so much, Danielle, for your presentation. The next person is George Jonathan. Mr. Jonathan, please. Mr. Jonathan, who will get your David address for the public record, and you have five minutes to make a presentation. Welcome.
George Jonathan, I live on Stewart Street near Hunter. Um, I guess the concept is harm reduction. And this is, when we're, when you guys are making this decision whether or not to continue to fund One Roof, it needs to be framed within that framework. Is this effective harm reduction? People have said a lot of very nice things about the organizations, people from the organizations, but I have concerns whether or not what they say they're doing and what is actually taking place there match. Monday evening, um, I ran into a friend of mine who is homeless, um, does struggle with alcoholism, um, does make use of the services. Um, and he was walking down Hunter Street with a tent, and he said to me, I said, "Well, where are you going?" He said, "I'm going to East City to find somewhere to camp, because I can't go, I can't go to the shelter, because somebody pulled a cantana on me," which is a sword. And I said, "Are you serious?" And he said, "Yeah, I can't, I can't go there because somebody pulled a weapon on me there." I don't know if that's true. I don't know the context of that, but but he was going somewhere else. And then last evening, I ran into the the gentleman again, and he was very intoxicated, and he was talking about how he was going to kill himself and all of this this stuff he's talking about. He's going to get a shot of fentanyl and just end it. And, you know, so I just have a lot of concerns about that, and I live on Stewart Street within this neighborhood, and the effects on our neighborhood have been vast, and it has been very negative. And people talk about like supporting marginalized people and vicariously housed people. The Stewart Street neighborhood, most of these people are people just on the cusp of homelessness themselves, myself included. And so, yeah, this decision-making, a lot of this needs to be focused around how to have concern about people in the neighborhood, about where, when you bring this organization into our neighborhood, how it affects us. And it hasn't been great. Some of the things that have been said tonight have sound positive, like involving the police more. Um, we need some more increase of security. I had had a good conversation with uh Counselor DeChica the other day about more police patrols around some of the parks, and so that's a central issue. So I'm not going to tell you, and I don't really know how, which way you should vote, whether you should support, continue to fund it or not fund it, but you need to think through, is this effective harm reduction? And how is it affecting the people that live in the neighborhoods where we're bringing these services? So I think that's about it.
Thanks very much, Mr. Jonathan. There may be some questions for you. Questions? Any questions online? Counselor Burke, please.
Uh, Mayor Liel, thank you. Um, through you to the speaker. Um, George, I know you've been very critical of the way that people have been set up in the parks around Stewart Street by your house. Um, are you worried or concerned at all about how that's going to escalate if this service is cut, given the the numbers in the report about how many people are served by this service?
Jonathan, please.
Um, I myself have spent the vast majority of my time in the street, or sorry, I myself have spent the vast majority of my twenties in the street, in bigger cities. Um, and I did make use of services then, like with a specific service in Montreal with Dan's Labrou, Pops. Um, and if the services to One Roof are cut, you know, I don't know. It's hard to say. I, it sounds hard to say this, but I think people will just have to figure it out on the mo- on their own. That's what I had to do. You know, people have to figure it out themselves. They can't always just be supported by the city. It's it's sad, I guess, but life is hard. And uh they'll just have to move along, but we can't just let sort of criminality and chaos take over the parks.
Um, through the, through the chair, um, are you willing to accept a possible increase in people setting up in the parks uh if this service is cut? Thank you.
No.
Mr. Jonathan?
Well, absolutely not. If the service, uh, yeah, no. I think actually another point, I'm sorry, I didn't make any notes. I'm just speaking off the cusp. But uh I think either way, if you cut the services, you should probably increase security around the parks. But if you continue to support the One City, I think you should still increase security around the parks. So either way, there should be an increase of security around the parks, especially in these downtown neighborhoods where most of the people living there are themselves vicariously housed. You know, just, uh, yeah, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Burke. Any further questions?
Thank you.
Mr. Jonathan, uh, do you think there's a necessity to have a greater police presence in the area?
Absolutely. Um, I think, actually, um, I spoke with uh Counselor LaChica, and I spoke with uh Captain Kirk Kelly over at the police station, because uh there is a tent specifically, like I'm talking about the basketball court, basketball park, playground park, that's just down the street from One City. So a lot of the people, you see them come down from One City, they get bags of donation, bags of food, bags of clothes, and then they set up around that area, especially along Bethune Street. So the last two weeks, there is, I actually left you a message about this, Mayor Liel. Um, there is one tent there specifically, and it was becoming a hotspot for crack smoking. And I I know this because I walk in this park every single day. I had a dog. My dog passed away recently, but um I am continuing my walks through the park. And I was calling, I called the police, "Hey, there's about five people smoking crack outside of a tent," and and, you know, it that was an inefficient method, because when you call for service, nobody can come other you can't just rush over there to stop crack smoking. So when I spoke, talked, spoke to uh Kirk Kelly and LaChica, they both agreed that a good method would to increase patrols, foot patrols, bike patrols, to stop people using drugs in these services. I feel bad that the person's camping, but no, you can't be smoking crack and having a party in the park like that, especially one with a playground like that, so.
And you appreciate, appreciate, Mr. Jonathan, that more boots on the ground equates to more money being invested to make that happen?
Yes.
Very good.
Absolutely, and that's part of it. So it's it's, to make a finer point, um, I think it's important to balance here.
Right.
Harm reduction with security. When you increase harm reduction, you also have to increase security. And uh, you know, I appreciate you guys have a difficult job to balance those things. Um, but like I said, it's very nice. The representatives of One Roof have said very, very nice things to you this evening and positive things. I like to hear the organization is going in those directions. But I have concerns that what they say and what is actually happening is a little bit different.
Counselor Dugay, please.
Uh, thank you, uh, Mayor Leo. Mr. Jonathan, I, uh, I want, first of all, I'd like to thank you for attending.
Oh, thank you.
While your remarks were informal, uh, like the previous speakers, um, both in person and virtual, they are important. I just want to clarify, uh, a follow-up to Mayor Leo's comment that, um, your concern is, uh, and I know the, the, the part that referred to, uh, the basketball park, uh, um, but your concern is, um, or interest is to ensure effective, uh, security and enforcement of our parks and facilities by law. Is that what you're saying, sir?
Yes, I think that, I think that is what I'm saying. We need to support the people that they get the help they need, effective harm reduction, which means focus to getting them off of drugs and focus to getting them help. But we need to balance that with forms of enforcement and security to ensure the community where this center is brought into remains to be in a state of sort of like functionality. Because I assure you that when this church opened, criminality increased, especially last summer. I hesitantly say that this year it has become slightly better. Um, last year we had a huge issue with prostitution up and down Stewart Street and it's all, it's all connected. It's all connected. Um, and that has gone away this year, but garbage, drug use, all of that stuff is still remaining. So we need to balance social supports with security, if that makes sense.
Uh, Mayor Leo, if I might, uh, thank you, um, um, Mr. Jonathan, for that, uh, detailed response. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any further questions? Thank you very much, sir, for your presentation.
Uh, yes, thank you for, uh, listening.
Next, we have Melissa Addison-Webster, please. Is Melissa here? Welcome, Melissa. Good to see you again. We just need your David address for the public record. You know, you know the routine. Thanks, Natalie.
Yes, that's great. Wow, democracy takes time, eh, folks? Thank you, everyone, for your patience this evening. Uh, dear respected Mayor Leo, uh, and prospective counselors. Um, my name is Melissa Addison Webster. I reside at 11 Edgewood Avenue. I'm a local concerned community member with a background, um, as a community mental health social worker. I'm thankful to be able to share my opinions, uh, on the important issue of funding for a low barrier shelter and for drop-ins. I was born and raised in this area. Um, and I've been a longtime anti-poverty organizer and activist. And, um, and in many ways, it's hard to see how our community and our municipality has changed and often hard to see how our downtown has changed. We know that due to government policies, downloading and tax cuts, that we're in a really difficult place. And I know that municipalities across Canada are struggling. I know that our federal government does not redistribute wealth the way they used to. Um, and so we are seeing all of these difficult things happen when downloading is happening. And you guys end up holding the bag in many ways. So I see the way we do not have funding and how frustrating that is for everyone, especially at the municipal level. I also see how hard it is for municipal planners and for, um, municipal employees that are doing their best to try and deal with these challenging issues. Twenty years ago, the Brock Street Mission stopped serving the only free meal in, um, in our city. So I've been at this game a little bit. And so during that time, we were deeply concerned about this decision. And there was a small group of people who met at St. John's Church. And we affectionately called the group the Church Ladies because it was all women in their sixties and seventies who are all coming together to try and solve this problem. And there was, um, one particular young man in this group, and that young man had a spring in his step and a twinkle in his eye, and that was Christian Harvey twenty years ago. Uh, since those days, Christian and a handful of kind, hardworking and devoted young people began, um, serving the most marginalized in our community, from using volunteers at the warming room to creating One Roof and subsequently One City and the Trinity Center. Christian, along with Tammy and Jenny and Caitlin, Michael, everyone, um, have worked to embrace those on the margins of our society. And our city is really complex. We have the tenth highest level of, um, rents in the whole entire, um, in all of Canada. So it makes it really expensive to live here. Um, we have high unemployment. We've lost a, an amazing amount of really great jobs that have gone overseas. Um, and we also have very low welfare rates. So I know that the provincial government keeps welfare rates quite low and that's quite terrible and causes a lot of suffering. Um, further to this, we also have a terrible, uh, overdose or opioid crisis. A friend of mine who was a nurse practitioner in the span of, um, the, uh, during COVID, she lost two patients to COVID and lost 24 pa- patients in that time to overdose. And we know that all of these people, um, who have died or are experiencing homelessness, they're all, they're all our kids. And they're our brothers. And, and they're still really important people who have had difficulties and complex issues in their lives and complex traumas. At least in my experience, if we have a trial, trauma-informed approach, most of these people have had terrible things happen in their lives. Low barrier shelters serve lives. Um, and, and I can't imagine if we cut the drop-in center, we have a big base of money coming in through tourism. So we need to remember that. Um, we need a space for people to congregate. As a friend of mine whose daughter lives with mental health challenges and accesses One City, um, she said she needs cooling spaces. She needs all of these things. She said One City is the village that saves her daughter's life in many ways. And I want to just bring some comments from a friend of mine who's also, uh, a business owner and homeowner and landlord. Her name is Kelly Benici. And, um, she's worked with One City since 2019. And, um, she says without pulling funding, um, would be extremely reckless and dangerous. Um, and is this really the legacy that we want to have? We want to, why are we questioning accountability when we have really wise city employees who are looking into accountability? We have benchmarks, you have all of these things. Money just doesn't get tossed out by the city. We know through their, um, every year they have an annual audit. One City, uh, really works hard with the money that they, um, that they receive and they have a lot of baselines that they have to work within. So I'm just going to close out by saying that.
Melissa, finish your thought there.
Okay, yeah. So that there's accountability and that people are working really hard and they're working in really, really, they're working with the most marginalized folks who have complex needs, who, you know, how, it's a really, really, it's a really hard job. I don't do frontline social work anymore because I cry in front of council or I do these things. It's too much. It's really, really hard. And so, um, so I'm asking all of you to try and step up and lead to demonstrate that Peterborough is a place that takes care of people. Start by funding One City and don't stop until every person is housed. Thank you for your time.
Thanks so much, uh, Melissa. There may be some, uh, questions for, questions for Melissa. Anybody, uh, counselors online, any questions for Melissa? Thank you very much for being with us this evening.
Thank you. Come on.
That concludes our delegations this evening. We'll now go to, um, consent items. Um, does anybody want, uh, 12A, 12A? I'll have to look at the screen and run the horseshoe at the same time here. 12A. 12A, anybody online? 13A. 13A? 13A, anybody online, Mr. Clerk? No. 13B. 13B, no. 13C. Anybody online for 13C? 13D. 13D. 13E. E. 13F. G and F. 13G. Counselor Dugay. 13H. 13H. 13H has been separated. Sorry, yes?
Uh, through you, Chair, 13H, please.
Yes, we already got that.
Why, I, 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 oh, I didn't hear that. I thought it was G. Thank you.
Not a problem. Uh, 13I has already been separated out because of Counselor Dugay's, uh, conflict. Uh, 13J. J? 13K. 13K. 13L. 13M. 13N. 13O. 13P. 13P separated out. Now, we're, we're still going. 13R? Yeah, we haven't got there yet. I'm going through the alphabet very quickly, uh, Counselor Leo. You wanted 13P separated out? Is that correct? P? No. Okay. Yeah, it's, uh, it's being added. 13R. There we go, sir. 13Q. It's Q separated out. So if somebody could move A, B, or 12A, 13A, B, C, D, E, F, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, uh, R. Somebody like to move that. Thank you, Counselor Chica. Counselor Dugay, comments or questions? We'll go to a vote. And that's carried. 13G, Counselor Dugay, please. That's the zoning on 341 Water Street.
Uh, Mayor Leo, uh, colleagues, um, um, notwithstanding the delegation that we received this evening, uh, that is the applicant's planner. Um, I, I think it's important, uh, that we continue to support the deferral so that I'm allowing our staff an opportunity to provide a report to speak to the new proposal and some of the intricacies development, just to ensure we have a safeguard, um, in place. It would be very typical in a, uh, uh, an application of this type which has been deferred, that we typically receive an information, a supplementary report for information purposes. And I believe, uh, talking previously with Commissioner Nelson and Director Appleby, uh, I believe that there were a report, the item could return, uh, Commissioner Nelson in August. Is that correct, sir?
Commissioner Nelson, please.
Through the Chair, Leo. Uh, yes, that's correct.
Um, if I might, uh, Mayor Leo, then, uh, thank you. Uh, it would be, I think it's important and I would welcome the supplementary reports so that we can make, uh, a decision not only predicated upon the, the development proponents' planners' information, but that of our own staff to ensure technically this application can work. Those are my remarks. Thank you.
So you're moving the, the deferral, Counselor?
I, I am, uh, essentially in support of its continuance. I just thought we, I'd clarify that we would continue with the deferral, yes.
Is there a second for the deferral? Continue and then report comes back, Counselor Chica. Um, any further comments or questions? We'll go to a vote.
Oh, hang on. Mayor Leo.
Sorry, Counselor Parnell.
Sorry, sir. I know, I know. It's, um, it's tricky with, uh, the remote thing. Um, I, I can understand what my colleague is, is saying, but this application, and I have talked to planning staff about it, and they actually support either the rental, um, housing, like the market rental housing or the student residence, either or, uh, would be appropriate for this location, knowing that as per our usual protocol now, and things have definitely changed, uh, since my, you know, first term on council, site plan does not come back to council. It is determined by staff by a very specific set of rules that are in place, and they have to meet all of the conditions, uh, necessary for either or. Um, which staff have said they're, you know, they're fine to continue down either path. But now we have heard, um, at council's request last week, um, that they have made the determination that, yep, they're going to make that commitment. It is going to be this five-story market rent, uh, building and not option A or B. Um, and that staff are satisfied that it meets the official plan. Um, it meets the provincial, uh, policy statement. Therefore, we have to make a decision. Um, if we defer it, we could very well be facing the Ontario Land Tribunal once again, um, going against our own planning staff. So I really, and with great respect to my colleague, um, I really don't think we need a deferral. They have, we, they've done what we've asked them to do within a week and made the determination that it's going to be a market rent building. I just don't want to put us in a bad legal position.
Thank you very much, Counselor Parnell. Counselor Dugay, please.
Uh, thank you, uh, Mayor Leo. Um, um, the deferral, uh, the recommendation for a deferral would not, from my perspective and professional experience, uh, warrant or generate, um, a, an appeal to the tribunal because the decision hasn't been made. This application has been processed from my perspective in a timely manner. What's important that we've had members of the public who attended this evening receive what we, we haven't seen as a council. We have not seen a conceptual plan that illustrates the changes contemplated for this development. Whilst I do recall Counselor Real saying at the previous meeting, which one? We've now heard from the development opponent that it will be a rental market accommodation. But I think it's prudent upon us as the decision makers to see the concept plan and hear from our staff. And that can be done in, that report's forthcoming in four weeks. Those would be my comments. I still recommend we proceed with the deferral. Thank you.
And you've moved it to Counselor Chica's second. Counselor Chica, please.
Um, the vote was in progress. I think, uh, I, I know, respect, like, I.
I tried to watch, uh.
I, I think the table voted and then there was an, I'm just, I'm just wondering, are we going to cancel the vote and vote again? Otherwise the speaker can vote the way they would like.
Mr. Clerk, just help us out here.
Thank you.
We're voting on the deferral. Natalie, please, if you can cue it up for us. I do apologize. I'm trying to. And it's carried. A member of council had flagged, uh, 13H, uh, 1545 Monaghan Road. Counselor La Chica.
Uh, thank you very much, uh, through you, Chair. Um, we, we had a, a very lengthy meeting last week and I, I spent some time before returning tonight just reviewing, reviewing notes. and I, I spent some time before returning tonight, just reviewing, reviewing notes and the thinking through what we just talked about, the deferral at thirteen forty-one, um, Water Street. And, and that deferral was very much based on not having clarity about what the intention was for, for the property in terms of development. You know, the, because of the lack of clarity, there was a reluctance to, to finalize the zoning amendment. So I, I, to myself, I said, um, to what degree are we being asked here at fourteen, fifteen forty-five Monaghan Road, being asked to approve a zoning amendment, uh, without knowing the bigger picture and the implication of the, the proposal on the capacity of a larger site, because it's really two sites, uh, into one larger site, but with no further information? So, and, and I didn't get a chance to speak to Commissioner Nelson. I, I just wanted to put that out there. It, it, it's a similar animal in terms of looking at a zoning amendment that doesn't give us clarity in terms of what the scope is, uh, for the property. And so in a sense, it's giving it carte blanche at, at this very early stage. So I, I wanted to put that question out there because, you know, out of consistency, like, there, there are questions that come up about stormwater runoff, traffic density, um, safety zone between two schools. We know that this is sort of a special area. So, you know, by, by supporting the zoning amendment without any detail, um, how can we be certain that, that we're looking at it with, with clarity?
So Counselor Chica, we'd have to remove, um, what we approved last week. Are you moving that we?
I'm not. I, I just want to ask Commissioner Nelson, how is it different? If I could, just preliminary question, and didn't get a chance to think that through last week, and just wanted to bring that forward. Thank you.
Or Mr. Appleby.
Is Mr. Appleby here or available?
Just looking.
Thank you, sure. So, so, uh, Director Appleby, that would be great. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Mr. Appleby's online, maybe we.
Uh, thank you, your worship, and yes, I am here, and, uh, thank you for the question, Counselor Chica. I would suggest, you know, the, the application for, for fifteen forty-five Monaghan Road is a little bit different in that we don't really have a development being proposed at the moment. Uh, the, the mound is certainly looking at their options for future development. They have done some preliminary, um, kind of work towards what a development might look like. But at the end of the day, the, the zoning change that's being proposed is not proposing to add anything new to the property. Um, you know, they're contemplating developing kind of in, you know, uh, in accordance with the zoning that they already have. The only thing that they would like to achieve at this moment is, is, um, you know, the ability to develop in accordance to that zoning if they, um, subdivide their property for, for whatever reason in the future, you know, to ensure that the zoning they have still applies to the, the larger property as a whole, as opposed to being imposed on a sort of a smaller scale because it fundamentally changes how the regulations get, get, uh, imposed, um, if, um, this amendment wasn't, um, approved and they were to try and sever their property down the road.
If I may, Chair, just supplemental to Director Appleby. Um, thank you for that. Um, I guess, so, so if there was to be a future development proposed by, um, the, the owners, would, we would receive that, um, here at council, correct?
Mr. Appleby, please.
Um, uh, through your worship, I think it depends on, on the nature of what they propose. If they propose something that only requires, say, you know, maybe they do a land severance, um, and then they go straight to a site plan approval, then, then conceivably it might not come back through council.
So in that sense, if I may, uh, through you, Chair, um, it, it is similar to what we're talking about at, at thirteen forty-one, uh, Water Street. Um, it might not come back to council. And so we, we don't, it is, in a sense, a carte blanche. Correct?
Mr. Appleby, please.
Um, through, through, uh, your worship, I, I would suggest it's a bit different again because that property already has a certain set of land use permissions assigned to it through zoning. And so they are looking to, you know, try and capitalize on what they've already got in terms of zoning. So, so put it this way, the, the current property is not developed to its maximum extent, right? An additional development could happen on the property, and they're just trying to think about how to make that happen. Whereas in the thirteen forty-one water example, you know, they're actually seeking, you know, uh, a land use to be assigned to, to their property. So it's a little bit of a different context.
If I may, Chair, uh, so, so that means that there, there are a set of parameters already in place. There's a land use that's already stipulated, so that distinguishes this, that they need to abide by the rules of the current zoning. Is that correct?
Mr. Appleby, please.
Uh, through your worship, that is correct.
Thank you for that clarification. I appreciate it.
Somebody like to move, uh, item eight? Counselor Dugay, a second, or Counselor Baldwin? Uh, comments, any additional comments or questions? Anybody online? We'll go to a vote. And that is carried. Item I is, um, Argyle, and that's been separated out, uh, by Counselor Dugay. Somebody like to, to move it? Counselor Baldwin, second, or Counselor Crowley? Comments or questions? Anybody online have any questions? Now, we'll go to a vote. And that is carried. We'll now move to thirteen Q, the homeless winter shelter options. Counselor Real, please.
Um, through the Chair, um.
Counselor Dugay. Next.
I would like to make a motion that we go back to the original recommendation that was moved or made on the twenty-third of June. I cannot support the amended recommendation. Um, and I would beg the, um, Chair's indulgence, and I need to get some clarification on this from staff.
Counselor Real, you're putting this on the floor. You have a second. Counselor Crowley, proceed, sir.
Mr. Lademan, you did a really great job of sending us all an email. Can you explain exactly what the intention is of the recommendation from staff?
Mr. Lademan, please.
Uh, through you, Mayor Liel. So the recommendation from staff, uh, includes four items. Uh, the first one is, um, the overnight program at Trinity is currently only function, only funded as a winter-only six-month period. What's in front of council tonight as a staff recommendation is to extend the six-month non-winter months funding as was approved in two thousand twenty-five using only reserve funds. It would now add it to the base budget. The second item is the Housing Stability Fund, which is used to, um, ensure persons don't become homeless by providing some other financial benefits to the, to households. Um, Brock Mission to ensure, continue that they're able to go from thirty-two to forty beds. And that was also, all these items were funded out of reserves last year. And the fourth one being to expand the hours of the daytime, uh, program at Trinity from four hours to its full extent of hours, as was described by the speaker tonight. So those four items are what are, what are in the staff recommendation to be funded?
Through the Chairs are also a winter program, uh, being proposed.
So as the motion, well, for the original intent of the report, there are additional items identified in the report that staff have, have prioritized that from our recommendation, our first recommendation was that all the items currently funded under the reserve, um, funding this year be funded now normally through the budget. And then there's additional prioritized items for council's consideration for the winter months, which include, uh, warming space or additional shelter space as well.
Through the Chair to Mr. Potts, and you did a really great job last week. Can you explain that if there is no shelter beds available and there are people tenting either in our parks, private property, or public lands? What is the ruling? Um, and we have an enforcement, and certainly, can you explain where we, where the predicament is if we don't have shelter space?
Um, your worship, there, um, and, uh, this has been the subject of periodic updates to council, the, this answer. So it's not new, but, uh, there is a relationship between the availability of shelter space on the one hand and, uh, a condition to the city's legal right to enforce its Parks and Facilities bylaw on the other. There, there is some case law that, uh, uh, makes it more or less clear what it means to meet the standard. But as a general rule, there is that relationship between the availability of shelter space and the ability to enforce in, uh, the city's Parks and Facilities bylaw. Thank you.
Through the Chair to Mr. Potts. So right now, our enforcement is going out and visiting these sites. I think last week there was thirty-nine, uh, sites that they visited, um, but there was no enforcement taking place.
Um, it's, uh, your worship, I'm going to make a recommendation that, uh, the discussion in an open session at council not get into the specifics of specific enforcement, for the same reason that the Police Service Board would not start. Well, uh, more specifically, it's just, it, in terms of specific enforcement operations or strategy, that is properly a closed session discussion and not, not appropriate for open session. I respectfully submit. Thank you.
No, through the Chair, I'm, I'm not going there on talking about what the police or enforcement are going to do. I'm just, all I'm saying is that we're given a report every week about our enforcement going out and talking to people that are in either the parks or on, tenting on public land and that. And all they're doing is talking to them because they don't have a shelter space. And that's what we get. Visit thirty-nine sites, but there's no enforcement because we have no place to put them. That's where I'm going.
Um, your, your worship, I would not, um, suggest that there's no enforcement and the specifics of when there has been or, or will be. Again, I would recommend against an open session discussion of specifics. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Well, as of the seventeenth of June, there are three hundred and seventy-six individuals experiencing homelessness. That's on our by-name list, and one hundred and twenty-one individuals meet the definition of chronic homelessness. So let's do the math. We have one hundred and twenty-seven shelter beds. If we add the forty modulars on Wolf Street, and if we were to okay the eight beds tonight at Wolf Street, we would have one hundred and seventy-five beds. If we have three hundred and seventy-six people experiencing homelessness, that leaves us with two hundred and one people unhoused. That leaves this cohort of people, either couch turf, um, bunking with somebody, or live rough, that's tenting in our parks, public and private land. With the numbers I've just given you, I am finding it hard to understand why half of my colleagues have voted against helping homeless and the marginalized. I have heard comments from some of them that we have done enough. We have spent enough of the taxpayers' money on this issue. If we build it, more will come. I've read on social media, tell them to get a job. They're milking the system. They're lazy. They're just looking for a handout. Did you ever try to get a job when you're living in a shelter? When we, when we house people, they find success in our transitional housing on Wolf Street, the modulars. We have six people that have found full-time employment and six people that are bailing themselves to go into treatment. With all that I've laid out to you and my colleagues that voted against the recommendation, please tell me what the Plan B is. Um, to house, the hardest to house. If you do not support this plan, you will undo all the great work that this council has done. We will see an increase in tenting on, in our parks, our public spaces, and our private land. Calls for service to police, fire, paramedics, and the business to PRHC, and you just heard about the cost. What it is to hospitalize somebody will increase, which will only add an added cost to the taxpayers. There will be an additional influx of people downtown pushing shopping carts, then the increase in the decay in our downtown core.
Counselor Real, do you want to use your second find now, too?
I'm just finishing up.
Okay.
Again, to my colleagues, if you have a better plan to help the homeless and the marginalized, let's hear it. If not, get behind the plan to service this cohort of people. Thank you.
I have Counselor Dugay, the Counselor Crowley. Counselor Dugay, please.
Thank you, your worship. I have a.
And just to let everybody know, we've had a bit of a malfunction here trying to reach our colleagues online, on, uh, online. But go ahead, uh, go ahead, Counselor.
I have, I have my hand up as well.
Thank you, uh, your worship. Perhaps I should wait for Miss, Mr. Kennedy?
Oh, I just heard from Counselor. Go ahead.
Uh, your worship, I have a speci, one specific question of, uh, I, I need to speak to Mr. Kennedy. It's a procedural matter, if I might. So I'll wait. Or perhaps Mr. Kennedy can hear me from the distance away. Uh, Mr. Kennedy, we have a motion, a amending motion on the floor. Can, am I, I would like to call the question on the original recommendation. But given that there's an amending motion, do we have to allow for dialogue of saying to be continued? Or can I call the question now on the recommendation from our, uh, most recent General Committee meeting? It's a procedural question. I'm not offering an opinion. This is not, I just need a, a clarification on procedure.
Counselor Chica, that would, item Q, which is the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase in the Housing Stability Fund and the two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, six hundred dollars to expand Brock Mission's twenty-four summer capacity. Is that correct?
That is correct. Thank you.
You have to call the question on that. I'll get Mr. Clerk to provide some details here.
Uh, thanks, your worship. Um, I will have to defer to you just on the matter of if we do have an amending motion on the floor. I know it was moved by, uh, Counselor Real and seconded that the main motion be entered onto the floor. And I do know, you know, the counselor was talking about an amending motion. So I will defer to you to determine if there is an amending motion on the floor. In the case that there is an amending motion on the floor, then in terms of calling the question, if it was to be put forward and voted in the affirmative, then it would be to deal with the amending motion on the floor. In the event, uh, there is not an amending motion on the floor, then if the question were to be put and there were to be a vote to be held, it would be for the purposes of voting on the main motion. Thank you, your worship.
But, Mr. Clerk, the only motion on the floor right now is to, uh, uh, to vote on the recommendation that came out of General Committee of last week. Is that correct?
Uh, Mr., your worship, Mr. Chair, it's my understanding that it was moved by Counselor Real and seconded that the main motion be added to the floor. I do know there was discussion on whether or not to, uh, to have an amending motion, but, uh, I'm not, I'm not clear that there actually was an amending motion moved at this point in time. And I'll defer to you.
The main motion on the floor is what we approved last week plus the, the additional five hundred and eighteen thousand. Was that your intent, Counselor Real?
My intent was to go back to the original motion of the recommendation that we got in our, in our binder on the twenty-third. And then last week subsequently, two of those items were removed. And then you have what is on our, in our package this week. So I wanted to amend that, to go back to the original motion, which I got a seconded.
For the amendment?
And then I spoke to him.
Yes, for the amendment. To go back to the original motion.
That's right.
That was proposed by staff.
Yeah.
So that's what we're having a, the discussion on right now. Counselor Dugay, you could move, call the question at any time.
Uh, your worship, I'd like to call the question.
Okay. Which is non debatable.
Point of order.
On, on the amendment, uh. Counselor Burke, please.
Yeah, well, a couple of things in a point of order. First of all, I had my hand up and I am the co-chair of this portfolio. Um, I had my hand up online as Counselor Riel was speaking. So I'm unclear as to how our online uh, hand raising is getting recorded. Um, and secondly, I think there's some clarification because my understanding is Counselor Riel is moving. The entire list of recommendations that were in SAF report, which include an overnight. Um, uh, option in the wintertime.
That's correct, Counselor Burke, but would somewhat booze that we call the question is not debatable. So we're going to call the question.
So my point is that I had my hand up. And I don't feel like I was recognized, so.
You were, you were actually in the queue behind Counselor Dugay, by the way. I had Counselor Dugay, Crowley, then Burke. So a motion to call the questions always in order. It's not debatable. We're going to go to the, the question of calling the question. On the amendment. Uh, Oddness.
Uh, thanks, your worship. With uh, with your clarity that we do have an amending motion on the floor. As I understand it, and I apologize, I have technical difficulty here this evening. The amending motion is in reference to the two funding, uh, two funding. Streams that related to Trinity. So at the moment, then what's on the floor is an amending motion to the main motion. Regarding the two funding streams, and the counselor can clarify me if I'm wrong. The two funding streams associated with uh, Trinity. That were in the report from January twenty, June twenty third. That amending motion is on the floor. The question's been called. As for the procedure by law, uh, it's not debatable. The, the vote will be held. And the matter of, of the amending motion is before council for consideration right now.
Okay.
If, if the amending motion is supported in the affirmative. Then that becomes part of the main motion. In the event the amending motion is not supported, it's in the negative. And we're back to the main motion as, as presented uh, this evening in the agenda package.
Okay. Any further clarity? Thank you, Mr. Clerk. We'll go to a vote.
Uh, thanks, your worship. And just to clarify, at the moment, the, the question is, has been asked to be put. And that is, if it is supported in the affirmative. Then the vote would then be the next order of business on the amending motion. So if you, if you support uh, moving directly to vote on the amending motion, then you would vote in affirmative. As the question has been put.
And it's lost. Mr. Clerk, could you explain where we are now?
Thanks, your worship. So the uh, the vote to put the question meaning to then move immediately to consider. The amending motion without any further debate was not supported. So at the moment, on the floor, we have the amending motion. Uh, which is the, and I'll ask my colleague to post those if she can. That would be the two uh, two funding streams related to Trinity. So we have it moved by Counselor Riel and seconded by Counselor Crowley. Uh, that. The main motion be amended by what's before council on the monitors now. So. Council is now considering the amending motion. Thank you, your worship. Uh, thanks for the question, your worship. So uh. What's before council now is the amending motion. And because the uh, calling the question was not supported. And members of council have the opportunity to uh, speak to the amending motion. And then fo- following any debate, then there'll be a vote on the amending motion.
I think I have my hand up after Counselor Dugay.
I thought I was on the list. I was told.
You aren't. Absolutely. We're good. We got this. Um, so uh, through you, your worship, I do have uh, four amendments. That I would like to add to the. To the motion of uh, of Counselor Riel, if I may. So I'm having. Now my four amendments deal directly with the main motion. So. Okay, well, so I can only do.
Uh, thank you, your worship. Yeah, at, at the moment, we do have an amending motion before council. And procedurally, uh, council needs to deal with the amending motion first. And, and then they can consider other motions following that, but.
Okay, so you want to. I'll go back on the list then, or I'll, I'll wait until the, the vote happens. Thank you. Do we get Counselor Burke? Okay.
So what do we do? I mean, I'm here. I think your guys' mics are turned off. Like, is it my turn to speak?
On the amendment about the two uh, allocations for Trinity.
Thank you, Mayor Lille. Um. Poof, you know, I think that um, I want to commend my, my council colleague on moving um. Moving the amendment. It, I think that it's the most clear way forward and you know, I'm not going to try to speak on. Um. You, you know, the, the issue of Trinity better than the delegates who have come here to speak tonight. Um, about the service that is provided and the positive impacts to our community um, from that service. Um, I think that. I'd like to remind council that this was a decision that we passed as council to fund out of the reserves. Acknowledging um, the way that the site was working uh, and those service gaps. Our staff. Uh, and the work that we have done, uh, you know, looked at how we could make the, the situation at Trinity. Um, better for everybody. And, and so when we approved these, these recommendations last year out of the reserves. Um, we have seen a positive impact. From what council has decided on. There are less gaps in service, which mean. There are less opportunities for people um, that are vulnerable in our community, not having anywhere to go. And seeking shelter and refuge, uh, you know, i- in spaces that um, are not set up to give them these things. And um, I wish, and I'm sort of heartbroken here. I wish two things. I wish that this argument could be simple enough. So that we could just view it from the perspective of the people that are struggling the most in our community. That need the support because I'm telling you. Without services like this, the impact to our most vulnerable commu- community members is going to be drastic. Um, I also wish that, you know, maybe we were talking about. Uh, the ideas that came up from some of the delegates to have more, more supportive housing options. To have, to have better living conditions than uh, you know, an army caught in a church basement with it, with a bowl of soup for lunch. I wish we were talking about that. But you know, none of these things tonight are being proposed. What is being proposed is a continuation of a vital service in our community. That reaches a significant number of people that need our support. So if you're around the table thinking that for whatever reason, we should not continue on with this, fine. I'm not going to challenge you on that. But let's at least continue this service along. Because I believe that it's an essential service. Let's continue this along until one of you. Or our staff can come to the table with a better solution. Because until we have that, it's completely unfair to everybody involved to cut this service like this. It's unfair to the investment that taxpayers have made through the city. Investing in infrastructure in Trinity. To get it going. It's unfair to the organization. Who is constantly living, you know, one step forward, one step back in terms of what we are asking of them. Um, and it's completely unfair to our homeless and unhoused community who access, access this service. Um, to, to not keep it in place. Um, I'm a little unclear because about the, the amendment, because when I heard Counselor Riel speak. He asked Commissioner Layman specifically about the winter option. Counselor Crowley made a motion when it was minus forty. In the wintertime for staff to come back with us with a report for options. And staff have given us a very viable option. For three hundred thousand dollars. We are able to vastly increase the capacity at Trinity with that winter response. Forty people. So I hope that the winter response is part of the amendment because I believe that was Counselor Riel's intention. I heard him talk about it. I heard him ask our staff specifically about that part of the report. Which was the staff recommended option. And I urge you around the table to please continue to support this. Until you or us or staff or anyone else can come to the table with a better solution. Because we don't have one tonight. And so. I can guarantee you what's going to happen when this service stops next April. Is that you are going to see hundreds of people. That have had a place to go to find resources and their basic needs met, not have that in place anymore. I guarantee there will be an encampment like you have never seen in the park by Reed Street. It's already, it's already there. And, and it will grow exponentially. So. If that's what you want, that's what you're going to get by not supporting this. We are glad, and when I say we, Counselor Riel and I are glad to take suggestions, feedback, look into other options. Present council with different options uh, at the table, but we don't have any of those in front of us right now. This is an either or, either or scenario. Either we continue to fund this. Until we can do better for the community. Um, and the, and the people that need the support. Or we get rid of, rid of the service. No other municipalities that I, that I have seen. Are, are, are backstepping on their homelessness support. Most of what I read that other communities are doing is they're expanding their, their homelessness services. So. You know, I, I just urge my council colleagues, please, this is a vital, vital support for our community. And we need to keep it going. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Burke. We've got our technical problems looked after. Um, I had uh, next was Counselor La Chica on the amendment. Counselor La Chica, please. And then we have Counselor Beamer and Ake. Counselor.
Thank you very much, Mayor Lille. Thank you. Um, it's, it's, thank you to my, my elbow partner who's distant today, but uh, close in spirit. I, I, I agree wholeheartedly with, with your comments. Um, tonight, I think we've heard perspectives that we didn't hear last week. Um, we got information that we didn't have last week. We, we were able to hear from one city. To clarify um, how robust the staffing and services are. Uh, that are provided at Trinity that justify the audited annual general meeting report. Um, that, that they put forward responsibly. So, so there are things that have come forward. We, we've heard from um, experts. We, we've heard from. Those in, in, in the healthcare field. We've, we've heard from our, our medical officer of health. We've heard from community members. I, I, we're hearing a message that we as a city need to do better. We need to come together and, and thank you for that reminder. And this is how we can do better. By enhancing the good work that's begun and the progress that's being made. Yes, there are things that we can do still to, to, to make the situation. We, we did, we did hear George speak. About, you know, how we can work together and how things do need to be monitored. And we're going to get better at this. And, and it's incredible to hear our city staff speak about. Um, the, the relationships that have been built with the community, the working group that's happening. We, we've received a lot of information that should quell any doubt about whether the decision to move forward. Um, with, with an enhanced, with more space, with, with, with more experts and professionals. Uh, trained staff that are working to support uh, our most vulnerable. I think it's a step in the right direction. I wholeheartedly support the amendment that uh, Counselor Riel has brought forward. And, and just the positive feeling in the room tonight. Um, about really thinking about the communities that we serve. I think this is the greatest decision that we could make. For our city. To address our needs and the needy that are here. You know, we, we, we want a sister with cities across, across oceans. Uh, to, to show our support and solidarity. Let's support and provide for the needs. Of those that are without here in our own, our own city. Let's do that tonight. Let's do it together. And um, I just implore you to, to consider uh, supporting this motion from Counselor Riel. And that we've heard together, the many voices that came forward tonight. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Counselor Beamer, please.
Thank you, Mayor Lille. Appreciate that. Um, Mayor Lille, speaking to the, the two amendments to increase funding to Trinity. Um, first, I'd like to start off by saying we're a very compassionate community. Uh, some of the comments from the delegates this evening were, were a little bit disappointing. We're a very, very compassionate community. And I think it's important to thank the residents for their compassion and further care. Mayor Lille, I've said it myself before and I've heard it many times. A community can be best judged by how it treats its most vulnerable. And when it comes to Peterborough and how we treat our most vulnerable, we punch way above our weight class. Peterborough is very compassionate and Peterborough is very, very generous. I think it's important to point out, however. We have one of the highest property tax rates in Ontario. We have one of the highest unemployment rates in Ontario. And we have one of the lowest median incomes in Ontario. And yet, we offer more social supports than other communities our size in the area. And we offer more social support, supports than other communities larger than us in the area. Again, we are a very generous community. We offer more discretionary benefits than other communities. More in rent subs, more in outreach services, more in meal programs. We have fifty sleeping cabins. We have six shelters and more shelter spaces per capita than the majority of municipalities in Ontario. Mayor Lille, let me provide some specific numbers. We provide social assistance and life stabilization for three thousand one hundred households. We provide social housing oversight of six hundred and nineteen rent supplements. One thousand five hundred and seventy rent geared income units. Seven hundred and eighty affordable housing units, one hundred and seventy portable housing benefits. And as mentioned, we provide more shelter spaces per capita than the majority of municipalities in Ontario. The support we provide for housing and homelessness is staggering. We provide more and better social supports than most communities around us. And for many, that is something to be very proud of. And in a sense it is. However, there is a significant cost to the property tax. However, there is a significant cost to the property taxpayers for all these social supports that we provide. In twenty twenty-five, we spent eleven point one million. Now, most of that was provincial, but it's still taxpayer money. Eleven point one million for homelessness services on approximately three hundred people. Mayor Leal, what I'm hearing from many residents in the community is they are very compassionate, but they have a limit. Many residents are struggling themselves with the cost of living crisis. We can't keep asking them, the property taxpayers, to pay more and more for homelessness. We have to keep in mind the taxpayers' ability to pay. Many, many property taxpayers are struggling themselves right now. In twenty twenty-four, the tax increase in Peterborough was seven percent. In twenty twenty-five, the tax increase was six point seven percent. We have raided our social reserves for homelessness this year. We are now looking at a seven point four percent tax increase in twenty twenty-six. And if all these homelessness program recommendations pass tonight, we'll be over eight percent for a tax increase in twenty twenty-six. Mayor Leal, we have many working poor in the community, many seniors on fixed incomes, many pensioners just trying to stay afloat. They are struggling to pay their bills. They are trying to stay in their homes. They are struggling to pay their mortgages. If we keep spending more and more on homelessness and keep raising taxes, we'll have a whole new group of people who will need social supports. If we keep spending and raising taxes, we'll have a group of people who can no longer pay their mortgages and they'll need social assistance supports and they'll potentially be homeless.
Councillor, do you want to use your other five at this time?
Yes, please.
Okay, continue.
Mayor Leal, we can't keep asking the property taxpayers who are struggling themselves to pay more and more for homelessness. The other issue, Mayor Leal, I want to speak about is the accountability at Trinity. I've said this before, what has happened in and around Trinity, around the property owners, around the businesses, is terrible. Businesses in the area are down twenty percent. Some businesses in the area have had to lay staff off. Some businesses have had to hire security guards to ensure customers are safe. Businesses and homeowners have had to deal with property crime, vandalism, theft, harassment and threats. Businesses and homeowners have had to spend time cleaning up needles, garbage and human waste from their front lawns, driveways, porches and shrubs, and nothing is being done about it. The city has generously funded one city, but this organization has not put any effort into being a good neighbor to those who own businesses in the area or live there. Not surprisingly, crime in the area is up significantly. Police calls were up a hundred and forty-six percent in the first year we started funding Trinity. Police calls are up over a hundred and ninety-seven percent the second year. It's not getting better, it's getting worse. These calls are a significant drain on police resources and a significant cost to the property taxpayers. And this also means police resources are being diverted from other areas of the community. As I've said this before, what is happening to this neighborhood is terrible. So Mayor Leal, given what I'm hearing from the community, the concerns over the ever increasing cost of homelessness, now additional spending on Trinity and the lack of accountability around Trinity, I cannot support these two amendments. Thank you for listening, Mayor Leal.
Thanks very much, councillor Beamer. I have councillor Hickey for a first time. Councillor Riel for a second time, and then councillor Crowley for a first time. Councillor Hickey, please, for a first time.
Thank you, your worship. Can you hear me okay?
Fine, I've been through very well.
Thank you. Um, first I'll start by saying I voted incorrectly on that last vote, but we are where we are. Secondly, I'd like to thank a lot of the speakers, but Melissa Hughes in particular, there's a woman that has suffered greatly. Nobody recognized that fact. And um, I, I want to say I'm, I'm sorry for the position that you've been in. Uh, listening to some of the speakers tonight, I've got to say, I don't consider myself to be a bad person. Yet that's what I'm being told if I'm not going to support this, which I'm not going to support. Last year I supported it. It didn't work out. I have empathy. I have a big heart. I want to reduce human suffering and I want to reduce the marginalized numbers. I want to help all disadvantaged groups, homeless, LGBTQ, vulnerable, marginalized, indigenous. I don't discriminate. Everyone deserves the same treatment. That's the problem that we're having in my mind, with my lived experience, and I've said this before and I am going to say it again. We're getting things wrong. The mantra has been, meet them where they're at. It hasn't worked. Meet them where they should be is what I've believed all along. I don't believe housing is the first priority. Treatment should be the first priority along with housing. Because again, as we've shown, eleven point one million dollars and it's getting worse. I believe last year we were around the three hundred mark. Councillor Riel was talking tonight. We're at the three hundred and seventy-one mark, I think. So it is going up. And that's a problem that I have. So progress, we talk about, uh, one of the councillors had mentioned that uh, you know, we're showing progress and moving this forward. I don't think we are. I think we're going backwards because we're not addressing the issue that I said from the first night I was on council, this new session, which is the root cause. And the root cause, and it's not on any person individually, is mental illness and addictions. And until we're prepared as a society or a city to address those issues, the homelessness issue will just grow. I had a, I had an email from a constituent who was saying that, and I'm paraphrasing, that I believe this isn't our problem. We've done enough and it should go away. And that is exactly, that is not true. What I said is, we need help. We, we need legislation. When uh, MPP Smith was here, I was going to talk to him about when are you giving us the legislative tools to do the right thing? I'll use another example. My eighty-year-old mother with Alzheimer's, if I was responsible for her and let her wander the streets, I'd end up in jail. But for some reason, we're okay as a community to allow people that can't make informed decisions for themselves out on the street. So I, I fail to see that difference. They talk about um, philosophies. I, I think our philosophies are, are actually the same. We want the same outcome. We want people to be cured as best they can, and that requires treatment. There is no place that's safe for people, and I speak unfortunately with a great deal of experience. There is no place that's safe other than a facility that can offer specific services for mental health and addictions. If the motion were tonight to direct this money that we're talking about to getting treatment, I would support it. But it is not. So I cannot support it. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Hickey. Uh, councillor Riel for a second time. And then councillor Crowley, then councillor Vassiliadis, and then councillor Burke. Councillor Riel, please, second time.
I'm through the chair. I, I just love following my last two colleagues. Because they give me all kinds of ammunition and they love to talk about numbers and all the rest. The problem with Peterborough and the reason that I ran for city council fourteen years ago was to bring jobs to Peterborough. We have an employment issue. If you have an employment issue, then you have people that fall into what we're talking about here tonight. And we have done a terrible job of bringing employment to Peterborough. If we were back in the golden years when I was raised in the city of Peterborough, go to school, get a job, get married, buy a home, raise two good, two kids, retire. There is the life. That is not happening today. There are people that are falling through the cracks every day. And when employment happened in just last week, one of the businesses we have here, there's going to be a hundred and sixty people without a job. Multiply that by four because that's the average family. So over six hundred people are going to be in uh, um, without, without employment, without maybe a home, whatever. It's six hundred and fifty thousand dollars to buy a home. It costs a hundred and, or um, eleven, twelve hundred dollars to rent a one-bedroom apartment. People that are on ODSP or Ontario Works cannot afford this. And what happens within a year? And I'm going to just talk about a male. A male could have a functioning family. And that family breaks down. Maybe because of alcohol, drugs, or he loses his job. Then the family dynamics breaks down, then the home breaks down, then he has gone through EI. He's now on social assistance and he's living over here in one of our shelters within one year. One year. All we're talking about tonight, to me, is chump change. To help hundreds of people that are really up against it. They need help. We're not talking about the end of the world here. We're talking about saving a life. And when I hear comments, you know, like, uh, again, tonight I hear it, we've done enough. Well, I'm sorry. If you're waiting for the federal and provincial government to step up to the plate, then you're going to be waiting a long time. They have downloaded this on us. It started with the uh, Christian government who downloaded affordable housing on to the province and the Mike Harris that downloaded on the municipalities. And we're stuck with it right here, trying to house people. That's the, that's the uh, the salient point is to get housing. I just heard what councillor Hickey said, oh no, we need to be treatment. Well, you have to have somewhere to go or somewhere to come from before you can get treatment. Then if you get treatment, you have to have somewhere to go. That's called traditional housing. So that's what we need here. Then we need a permanent home. We have fifty people in our monitors down on Wolf Street that are ready for their permanent home. We have no place to put them. I'm the chair of Peterborough Housing Corp.
Councillor Riel, you've got one minute left on your.
We, we have a plan to build fourteen hundred units of affordable housing. The cost is so prohibitive, we can't build anything. We're waiting for the federal and provincial government to come to the plate. When they do that, and we've proven that we can build it, we just built an apartment building on Monaghan Road, fifty-three units. We have a number of people in there. We show them we can do it. Give us some money, we will get the housing. We will solve this housing and homeless problem that we have today. Just give us a chance to do it. Right now, we're asking this council to give us some money so we can house some people and take them out of dire straits that they're in. Because without that, you're going to see the tenting, you're going to see the people that are walking the streets here, pushing their carts. You're going to see them in doorways. And God forbid, if the inclement weather comes, you're going to see a pile of deaths. I don't want that. I can't go to bed thinking about that. I want to do something about it. That's why I ran for council. Thank you.
Councillor Crowley for the first time.
Uh, thank you, your worship. I, I've, I've heard a lot of the talk around the table and a lot of what I was thinking about over the last week was a direct result to um, what I heard from a few councillors around here who opposed the Trinity funding. Um, you know, I heard what they were saying. Uh, I heard what those, those of us who were supporting Trinity in the winter homelessness shelter option um, were saying. I spoke to business owners around the area, uh, some residents around the area and my, my idea over the last week was to try to come up with uh, a series of, of things that we could possibly add to the main motion that would potentially make it a little bit more attractive for those who maybe were on the fence. Maybe, maybe Trinity isn't such a bad thing to fund because it keeps forty people indoors. Um, and, and I, I think that, that it would behoove us as a, a council to, at the very least, vote to continue the funding for Trinity. There are, there is language in some of the amendments that I have that would allow us to look at other options if there were potentially other options. But I think that the important thing right now at the moment is to continue to fund what we have and to, to let Trinity do what they do with some of the people that are going through potentially what is the worst time of their life. And um, I, I just think that, that we should look at doing, uh, look at doing the right thing. So that's all I'll say for the moment. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you councillor Crowley. Councillor Vassiliadis. First time.
Thank, thank you, mayor. Um, you know, first I want to express my appreciation for all the businesses and uh, people that took the time to speak with me over the last week. I've had a lot of phone calls, a lot of discussions. You know, my primary concern in this area is uh, how the negative impact of Trinity has had on local businesses. You know, during our general committee meeting, I asked questions about surveys, community consultations, and uh, the city conducted uh, collaboration with other organizations like the working groups and neighborhood liaison committees. You know, my goal was simply to obtain accurate information about businesses that are being affected. From what I gathered in our discussions with city staff, my impression was the businesses are doing fine. I was told there's very little interest in attending additional meetings due to low turnout and uh, sometimes, you know, only one person would show up and, you know, three out of two hundred surveys were returned. So based on this, the, the conclusions seem to be that the businesses are not experiencing any significant issues. However, um, you know, after personally reaching out to many businesses in the area, I found it was a very, very, very different story. Many business owners have expressed that they've lost faith in the city's ability to support them. As a result, they've taken matters into their own hands by locking the door during business hours, escorting customers to their vehicles, you know, hiring private security and, and goes on and on, right? And again, we've heard this before. This situation mirrors, mirrors what we've seen on Wolf Street, you know, poor surveys respond, rates and uh, limited communication from the city. And we're interpreted as signs that everything's fine. And when in reality, it's uh, far from it. So, you know, at the end of the day, our responsibility is to foster an environment where businesses can thrive. And in this case, we fall in short. You know, accurate, on-the-ground information is essential to making informed decisions and I had to go directly to the businesses to get it. And so when I asked uh, about commercial activity before and after Trinity's presence, many business owners reported significant declines. And again, we've heard it in, in another uh, councillor speaking. Uh, some shared specific percentages. Uh, regular customers have stopped coming due to the negative experiences that they're experiencing in the area. And you know, business owners should really be focused on growth, improving operations and supporting their staff. But instead, many are worried about whether, you know, windows are being smashed, whether they've been broken into or whether there's a fire in front or behind their, their businesses and it's happened. And uh, you know, again, it, it does definitely mirrors uh, Wolf Street in similar uh, situations. But you know, I had a business downtown for twenty-three years and I might have had maybe fifteen incidences that uh, where you'd have uh, you know, a bad situation, uh, someone comes in and they're causing some problems. So um, you know, that's fifteen times out of twenty-three years. That's, that's not too bad. But every time it happened, it ruined your day. So I can't imagine every day being ruined and, and then continuing on in business. So um, you know, we're, we're almost just saying to these businesses, just deal with it, you know? But one thing I do know about business owners is that they're great uh, problem solvers. And um, but right now they're kind of in survival mode. So that was my main concern. Again, I didn't get the, the information I wanted in asking questions um, in general committee, but it is interesting when you go knocking on doors and uh, making phone calls, what you do find out. So those are my main concerns. Uh, I just wanted to bring up the information I found out and uh, be happy to share that with staff anytime too. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Vassiliadis. Councillor Burke for the first time. And then Dugay, then La Chica. Councillor Burke, please.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Leal. Can you hear me okay? Mayor Leal, can you hear me okay?
Sorry councillor Burke, we're fine.
Thanks and um, yeah, and you know, like I said before, is that, is that I wish this could be as simple as just an argument um, to support people that are vulnerable that need it, but obviously it's taking a different turn. We've heard a lot of arguments um, by the people that are opposed to this uh, very sort of no-frills um, approach that we're, we're presenting uh, council to deal with our homelessness crisis. And you know, I don't even know where to begin. I think that I will say my experience is that I am a business person right downtown in the. I think that I will say my experience is that I am a businessperson right downtown, in the heart of downtown, on Hunter Street and George. And what I've heard for the last two years from businesses in, on George Street and Water Street and Hunter Street is that they thank me, you know, when they see me in the coffee shop or walking to work. They really thank me for the positive impact, um, that, that Trinity has had on them. And, uh, so, so, you know, I think we have to take that to heart. Um, the second thing is, is, you know, the definition of insanity is doing the same thing over again and expecting different results. What we're doing tonight is much like the approach that led to the encampment at Wolf Street. We cut funding, okay? And, and through, through steps like we're, like, through steps, like what is being talked about tonight, those steps led to the situation at Wolf Street where we had to, to have an all-hands-on-deck approach to rectify the situation, okay? By cutting this service, we know how many people that it affects. You will see an encampment like we've never seen before in this community. The numbers don't lie. People need support, they need shelter, okay? If there are other options that people have to address this, now is the time to present it. Because if we pull the cord on this, this system that we have set up, things will get worse. All the problems that you are dictating tonight to us and to the public, those things will be so, so much worse than they are now, okay? We have, we have made a significant investment into Trinity and into the infrastructure, um, that is there. And, and Trinity is a piece in the housing, in the housing continuum that is part of a scaffolded approach to this. Okay, we are receiving hard hub, hub funding that will give us much more, uh, space in, in creating transitional housing. And Trinity is a piece of that puzzle. Without Trinity, it makes it exponentially harder for us to find people that are ready to move into the modulars at Wolf Street. And when we have this transitional housing from the hard hub funding, we will experience, um, openings at Wolf Street and we will need to fill those openings. That's going to be really hard to do without places like Trinity. Um, the last argument that I've heard is about the dollars attached to this, okay? And, you know, first of all, I think it was recognized by the speaker, most of the eleven million dollars is actually not from the municipality. When you look at other municipalities, um, and what they receive from the federal and provincial government, they're matching those, uh, streams of funding at a much higher rate than what we are providing. I think we're giving about twenty or twenty-five percent of what the province and the feds are giving, um, out of that eleven million. Um, and, and so we, we need to support this because things will get worse. And if, if people don't like the, the shelter provider, if people think that there's a better option out there, fine. Let's work towards those better options around this table and continue this service until something better um, or more sustainable or better for folks that are unhoused is presented to us. Because if we take this service away, we are going to create a void in the community. And if the issues around Charlotte Street, like it's being presented, are bad, what do you think is going to happen when you have two to three hundred people that are receiving shelter support, food, um, from Trinity? What, what is going to happen to those people when, when there's nowhere for them to go? They're going to be in our library, they're going to be in our public spaces, they're going to be in down, in the downtown. And the responsibility of providing support for those people is going to be put on the shoulders of the community, okay? We, we need to support this. And I think that, um, the arguments, you know, in defense of the taxpayer, I want to hear those arguments when we're talking about the police budget. I want to hear those arguments when we're talking about, uh, increasing different divisions of the city and staff. I want to hear arguments when, you know, we see that our parking garages have a, a huge loss of revenue. You know, that's when I want to hear the, the financial argument. But yet we don't hear those arguments in those instances when there is a real opportunity to save the taxpayer money. This amount of funding represents very little, uh, in terms of our, of, of, of whatever increase is going to be imposed on, on the taxpayer. Um, but the impact of what this service provides is exponential and we need to support it.
Do you want to use your second five right now?
I'm done.
You're done, okay. Councillor Dugay, please. The councillor La Chica, the councillor Pardell. Councillor Dugay.
Thank you, uh, Mayor Lille. Um, and I, I would like to thank all the delegates who spoke this evening, either in person or virtually regarding the subject matter. The one speaker in particular whose comments recommend, uh, resonate with me and still resonate with me is that of Melissa Hughes. Um, she spoke from her heart. She spoke of the impacts that, um, a municipally-funded shelter and, uh, day program operation has and how impactful it's been upon her life and that life of her family. I have two questions I might, uh, Your Worship, to staff and then I'll conclude my remarks. Uh, to, uh, Commissioner Laidman. Can you, can you clarify for the benefit of the audience and, and council? If we ignore this report for the moment, is, uh, one city operating from Trinity United, do they have funding in place to operate till the end of March? Their overnight shelter program, March twenty twenty-six? Can you confirm if that is the case or not?
Mr. Laidman, please.
Uh, yes, through you, uh, Mayor Lille, that is correct. They currently would be funded through March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six for the overnight portion.
Did you, councillor Dugay?
Yes, uh, so Your Worship, um, concerns that have been expressed by some speakers this evening uh, and perhaps through correspondence received by council, there may be an opinion or a conclusion that if council approves this decision to not extend certain fundings to one city, that their operation would cease and desist. That's not the case. They would have operation. And my understanding that the winter, the shelter operation would continue until the end of March. That was just my staff.
Mr. Laidman, that?
That is correct.
Laidman, please.
Yeah, through you, Mayor Lille, that is correct. And the date, the, the, the daytime program, the extension of that would end on March, on December thirty-first. But the four-hour daytime program would continue through two thousand twenty-six as well.
Thank, thank you, um, Your, Your Worship. Um, I have a second and supplementary question, if I might, Your Worship, to Commissioner Laidman. Commissioner Laidman, um, if, given that there, the funding for the overnight shelter concludes in March of two thousand twenty-six, um, would the city be contemplating, um, a issuing an RFP for a comparable service to uh, interested service providers, perhaps including one city or other, um, service providers in our community?
Slideman, please.
Uh, through you, Mayor Lille, that would not be staff's intent. Right now, the, there would be no council direction to do so or budget. So what you're approving tonight is also the budget for that, such a, for such a service. So staff would have no direction to be doing an RFP for any shelter services at this point in time. Uh, because the funding for shelter services would be maximized and there'd be no direction from council to do otherwise.
Councillor Dugay.
Yes, um, Mayor Lille, perhaps the phraseology of my question was, um, incorrect. So Commissioner Laidman, if I might, through you, uh, Mayor Lille. If at, then at the end of March twenty twenty-six, my understanding is that the funding, correct me if I'm wrong, the funding for the winter or the overnight accommodation at, operated by one city at Trinity United, does it conclude as of the end of March twenty twenty-six?
Slideman, please.
The answer is yes.
So then, um, Your Worship, knowing that this is a scenario, I think it would be ultimately behooved upon, um, um, council to direct staff at some point to, um, as an anticipatory measure, to, uh, consider an RFP. And that would be circulated to, uh, the commu-, to community-interested service providers. I suspect the RFP would likely have parameters that would address such measures as impacts on neighborhood that it would at least provide the equivalent of forty, forty shelter beds and other programs. So that opportunity exists. So, um, I, 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 while I have received, like many of us, expressions of concern we heard tonight, that our decision that the winter overnight accommodation at Trinity, as operated by one city, would discontinue appears not to be correct. Um, I have also, like some of my other colleagues, have heard from, um, uh, residents and businesses who have expressed extreme concerns about the impacts that have arisen from the operation of this facility upon their properties, their livelihoods.
Councillor Dugay, do you want to use your second five now?
I will conclude, uh, no, I will finish now, I may use, use it later, thank you.
Councillor La Chica, please.
Thank you very much, through you, Mayor Lille, um, to, to my colleagues. I just, um, you know, I, I take the liberty as the town ward councillor who, who holds the, the jurisdiction geographically for Trinity and for Reed Street. Melissa, I appreciated what you shared tonight too. We've had lots of conversations on the phone and, and we do hit a wall. Uh, there's been a recurring tents popping up, popping up. And, and we do need to deal with this. And people need to be sheltered. This is a town ward phenomenon. And I would like to ask my Northcrest colleagues if they are willing to support a situation with three hundred plus unhoused in their own wards. The, it's, it's a lot for another ward councillor to be speaking to the businesses and constituents in another ward with such authority and such a categorical way of speaking. When, do you really know? Because Alex and I really know. And councillor Riel really knows because we hold this. This is a whole city issue. We talk about economic development and wanting to invest in our city and bring them here. And let's, let's get that land for the businesses to come here. Who will come to a city that does not take care of the greatest needs? And, and yes, the, the tax rate is very important, but we need to prioritize what is addressed and what is the most important. If we don't address the systemic issue, they will not come. I can't understand that we are not listening to our commissioner. We're not listening to an expert report. We're not listening to the directors in the social services division who have told you exactly what's happening and the progress that's being made. Are we in denial? Are we in denial that it's not going to proliferate when we no longer have Trinity? Nor another service provider that comes forward when we put forward an RFP? We've already done that. There is no one else. These people are experts. And they've been training and they've been getting better and we're building that relationship. And the businesses that Alex and I are talking to regularly in our central downtown area are saying things have gotten a lot better. And we need to keep Trinity. Yes, this, this and that and the spillover and, you know, when they line up, we can address those infrastructure issues. The visual piece, there's a place for us to do that. We can work together and Auden's here and we can talk about those things. But we cannot abandon this big problem. And other cities are not doing that. And other cities are spending just as much as Andrew Beamer is talk, talking about in that list. But they are not abandoning a key piece of the housing continuum. We can't be in denial. We can't disbelieve that it's going to proliferate. Melissa will have a lot more tents in her backyard if we completely shut down Trinity and support it no longer. We are not going to have a winter space. We're still short spaces by making this decision. We're no further ahead. We need to respect the work of our city staff, of our commissioner, of those who pour themselves into this, who have worked hard to make this go better. The women that we've heard speak in this division are the ones that have made the magic of the modulars. They are at Trinity, they are making sure that this improves. So Northcrest folks, you don't know what it's like in the downtown. And we need to work together, as Danielle Trotter-War spoke tonight about. We need to work together to make this city healthy again. And we can't do that by taking away the supports that are so vitally needed that we heard about tonight. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
I was just going to ask you, do you want to use your second five? Councillor Pardell, please.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Lille. Um, I, I just had to weigh in on this because I am co-chair of community services, which does include social services and housing. Uh, councillor Beamer absolutely nailed it again tonight. Uh, he is so data-based and factual. I think he laid out in very clear terms, uh, the repercussions to the community and what we have done, uh, at this, you know, to this point. We were backed into a corner on draining our social services reserves. Backed into a corner. And we are all compassionate people and this is a very difficult file. But at some point, you have to realize that we cannot afford this on the.
I'd ask the audience to be respectful, please.
I'm sorry? Thank you. It's amazing that they always go after me, right? Um, so.
Please. Councillor Pardell wants the floor. Continue, councillor Pardell.
Yes, uh, the interruptions, uh, uh, the stopping of the interruptions would actually be appreciated, thank you. And I have learned.
Be respectful of councillor Pardell.
Luckily I can't hear them, uh, but it's a repeated offense against a female councillor. It is true, if you build it, that they will come. We have seen it over and over again. And this is going back, um, you know, even to the last term of council. And I have documented, I know it for sure, I heard it directly from the police, uh, that we had people, because of the, um, encampment that came up in Victoria Park, we had people moving here from New Brunswick because they had heard that it was, you know, just a great place to come. Peterborough's a great support city, we will give them everything. I did a social services tour last week as part of my portfolio. And I asked the question, when do we, when do we consider a person, a Peterborough person? Um, because I had been told, oh, it's two weeks. That's not true. If somebody literally moves to this community, day one, goes to social services to sign up for whatever benefits they can get and they say, yep, I'm moving here, I plan to make this my home, they become a Peterborough citizen. So we are attracting a migration of people because we are a compassionate, giving community. But it's just not sustainable, as councillor Beamer has pointed out. We have added fifty cabins that were supposed to famously be the end of tenting. Do you remember this? It was a great moment in many people's eyes and, and many of you say, oh, yeah, we won an award for that. But it has only unfortunately and very sadly gotten worse. We have doubled the shelter spaces and yes, to the, the previous councillor's point, Autonave Ward has done and forever has done our part with significant social housing and, uh, and a shelter. Um, we, and we have added recently fifty-three units at Monaghan Road. Those cost four hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars each to build. And the, the fifty-three people who moved in there must be in seventh heaven because it's a fully furnished, stainless steel appliances, most of the monumental supplements. This has probably given, um, a number of them a new lease on life, which is fantastic. But I've already had to call about stolen grocery carts in front of this building. So Autonave Ward is doing our fair share. And here's the point. We've done all of this work and, and it's great work. But the list just keeps on growing and it's just not sustainable. I have supported transitional housing when many of you have not. Because you, you know, the neighborhood didn't like it. And I will, by the way, I know there's an amendment coming up. I will support an RFP for a new provider to perhaps run a, a new version of a shelter that actually has rules.
Councillor Pardell, you have one minute on your first five.
Thank you, I'm, I'm wrapping up. I will, I, I believe there is this amendment coming forward, uh, to instruct staff to, uh, prepare an RFP for a new provider, uh, that will, that will hopefully, maybe you'll have rules, security, supports. And I think this is very important, uh, because we need to instill community confidence again. And we, we cannot just keep putting shelters here, there or everywhere. Um, the neighborhoods will tell you they don't want it. Um, we have, we need a better provider. Thank you.
Thanks very much, um, councillor Burke, you've already spoken twice. Councillor. Counselor Dugay for a second time, final time.
Um, I have a question of the clerk.
Yes.
Uh, thank you. Um, we have an amended motion. We're discussing then, um, a, a amended motion. Can, um, is, can we call amidst this debate, can we call the question that we vote on the amended motion?
Clerk, please.
Uh, thanks, Your Worship, for the question. Uh, that vote had already occurred on the amending motion. It was voted in the negative.
Thank, thank you for that, uh, clarification. There has been, uh, Your Worship, there has been some characterization of some councillors, perhaps myself included, that we, we don't care.
Point of order. Point of order, Counselor Riel.
Look, and if you're going to start pointing fingers at people, then do it right now. You said that there's characters assassinations on you tonight or other councillors. I'm sorry, we're having a debate. So.
We heard your point. Counselor Dugay, continue.
Sorry, um, I will, um, allow that interruption. But what I was speak, speaking to, uh, Mayor Liel, Jen.
Point of order. Who is running the meeting here?
Counselor Dugay, you have the floor. Continue.
Thank you, Mayor Liel. What I was speaking to is some characterization of council, perhaps all of us or some of us, uh, through emails and correspondence and social media. But for the record, um, you know, I do care. My family has gone through, um, matters dealing with addiction. So, um, I also have volunteered my time in this community in various capacities, helping with various homelessness initiatives, affordable housing initiatives. So I wanted to make, I wanted to clarify matters. Um, Your Worship, if circumstances at this particular facility with this particular operator was not problematic and not causing concerns to neighbors, uh, businesses and to councillors, we wouldn't be having this discussion. This is not the first time, not the second time, not the, I, this has been several times we've had this very self.
Point of order.
Yes, Counselor Burke.
Uh, we would be having the discussion because this is a budget issue.
Thanks for your point. Oh, Counselor Dugay, you're, you got the floor.
Your Worship, I will attempt to continue notwithstanding the second interruption. I'm well aware, Your Worship, that matters would still be subject to a budget because that is ongoing and we haven't finalized our deliberations. I'm certainly fully aware of that. And I'm, I imagine the persons today in attendance and those watching will also note they have opportunity to further comment on budgetary matters. Uh, with that being said, Your Worship, um, I, I do sup, I do acknowledge that the contractual obligations with one city will come to a conclusion, I believe, in large part in March of 2026. I do believe the city should be and appropriately would be, uh, considering, and we can instruct staff, um, to, uh, issue, the issuance of an RFP to, uh, to the, to the community, and that would be to interested service providers, and that could include one city. It could still be at the same location, but I think we need to explore that option. And I think we need to is through that very process is to ensure matters with respect to, um, impacts and relationship with neighborhood is dealt squarely upfront and early in the process so that we can avoid potentially some of the anguish that is being felt in this very chambers, uh, this evening. So those are my comments. Um, and again, to those that are here this evening, those that spoke, I do appreciate your attendance and I do value all of your respective input. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Dugay. Um, are there any other comments, um, from members of council? Perhaps, uh, I'll make a few comments. Um, it was rather interesting, a number of weeks ago, um, people were combing through my record as a provincial member of parliament. But they left one very important aspect of that record out. I was a member of the Select Committee on Mental Health and Addictions in the province of Ontario. I'm one of the signatories to that, so I do have a bit of background in this area. What my challenge is of not supporting, uh, Trinity this evening is I had conversations with the, the folks from Trinity last week. I continue to see this of us not providing renewal and hope for getting people back onto a better trajectory in life. So I'll give six points we did this evening that I think has some merit to look at. Last week, one of the graduation ceremonies that I always go to is PACE, Peterborough Alternative and Continued Education. Why do I always go to the PACE graduation? Because those graduates are individuals that have faced barriers and hardships and constant struggle to get a high school education. I talked to the principal. I said, have you ever been engaged from PACE to look at some of the individuals that are in our shelters to provide them the opportunity to improve their academic background for a new chance and hope going forward? She said, no. Point two. I was a former chair of employment planning at council in Peterborough. I know they do have some involvement with Trinity, but we need to have them have a greater involvement with Trinity because they're a first-class organization that provides jobs and skills training for people that are experiencing barriers. Point three. There's 21% of people at Trinity that are indigenous, First Nations, uh, Inuit and Métis. We have no significant resport, support for Indigenous Services Canada for that 21%. I reviewed the number, the 94 recommendations from the Truth and Reconciliation Commission. Several of them talk about having culturally sensitive services to indigenous people experiencing homelessness. Number four, Trinity needs a social enterprise. I make reference to 12 brothers in the province of New Brunswick in communities at St. John and Bunton where they have a social enterprise engaging their individuals to be involved in learning skills and deployments. They build picnic tables. They build benches. They build planters. And that is giving them a skilled background to help them move through in life. Number five, in a meeting with Ms. Harrison last week, the city of Peterborough has been shortchanged by the Government of Canada in the homelessness area. The city of Belleville gets $3 million from Health Services Canada to provide access to treatment services for people that are in their shelter system. Number six, if we're going to spend $518,000, I'd rather buy more modular homes to provide stability for people. So those are the six points. That's why I'm not supporting this. I think it's time we went to a vote. That's defeated. Counselor Crowley, you have a couple items you, uh, Counselor Crowley, please.
Um, thank you, uh, thank you, Chair. Um, so I, I did have a number of amendments, but they were more or less related to whether, uh, Trinity received their funding, which they did not. So the, uh, one amendment that I have left is a, uh, an amendment to direct staff to have a request for proposals and, um, Mr. Kennedy, I don't know if you have the amendments that I had sent you earlier. Um, I believe the third one speaks to, um, an RFP. If you're able to pull that up? Okay, thank you.
You're moving that to Counselor Crowley?
I will be, yes.
The seconder, Counselor Dugay, could you pull it up for us, Mr. Clerk?
I would also second it if I could.
Yeah, it's already been done, I think, right?
Hmm.
It has. Didn't give my hand up fast enough.
Do you, we, will they read it? So that social services be directed to issue a request for proposals, RFP, from qualified community organizations with experience in homelessness and wellness support for the provision of additional low-barrier shelter beds within the city of Peterborough in accordance with the procedural bylaw. And originally I had, if I may speak to it, Your Worship, um, originally I had, um, created this as part of a package of amendments. Um, I understand that last year, or sorry, last week, there was, um, some conversation that, that we heard around the table that maybe some members of council thought that one city might not, um, that they didn't have confidence in one city as an organization sheltering, uh, our homeless. Um, so, uh, instead, um, this gives us an opportunity to have staff go, um, hold the community, have an RFP, see who's available, see who wants to do it. I know that, um, I had a, uh, fantastic conversation with, uh, a woman who has known me since I was a tiny little baby, and that's Peg Shaughnessy who runs Wet, uh, Red Path. And I know that Peg, um, is planning on, uh, potentially adding shelter beds to her wellness support, have a more holistic support model. Um, so yeah, I'm excited to see what staff can come back with. Uh, and, you know, to what Counselor Dugay said, one city will very much be in the mix if they wish to be and, uh, um, come back with, with their, uh, RFP as well. So we will see what happens. Uh, but, uh, thank you, Worship. I think that's good.
Counselor Crowley, I think you, you met the procurement bylaw.
I apologize. Did I miss? Oh.
Procurement.
Procurement. Okay, fair enough. I apologize. I put, uh, the wrong, the wrong word in there. So it should be, should be procurement bylaw, correct?
Mr. Freiberg, please.
Uh, Your Worship, uh, I just wondered if I could just seek clarification on, on the motion that is now on the floor. Um, the, the principles of the procurement bylaw are such that staff do not issue requests for proposal documents unless we have sufficient budget. So I just want to seek clarification from council. We would issue the document, but we would insert a phrase or make it clear in the document that the award of the proposal is subject to sufficient budget approval. So, so with your concurrence or direction, we would, we would issue the document, but we will put that caveat in there. Otherwise, we're breaking the direction you've already given to us.
I would, I'd be acceptable of that. That would be.
Set up, hey, Counselor Dugay? Yep, you're good.
Yeah.
Yes, I'm fine with that, uh, friendly revision.
Thank you.
Mr. Freiberg, please.
And, and Your Worship, uh, thank you for your indulgence. So once again, the, the, the principles are such in the bylaw that council gives directions and they create the framework. Now, the award of the report or the award of the bid document is typically handled all at the staff level. Is it your desire that it be continued in this bid document to be awarded by staff, to be evaluated by staff and awarded by staff? Or are you asking that it come back to you? Or is it your prerogative?
Sorry.
I just wanted to clarify.
Counselor Crowley?
Thank you, Chair. Uh, through you, Chair. Um, I, ideally, I think that it would be great if it came back to council. However, I don't want to be in contravention of the procurement bylaw.
The, Your Worship, the, the bylaw says that if it's council's prerogative, if they direct it, comes back to council, then it, it will come back to council.
May we add that?
Absolutely.
Language to the, to the, uh, we could add and that staff report back to council with a list of organizations? John, I can text you or else teams you something here?
If I might, uh, if it assists, uh, Counselor Crowley, perhaps we could add the, uh, following the procurement bylaw, add a comma, sub, uh, for council approval.
Yeah, John, I just sent you something that potentially you could add to the amendment that might that might suffice.
Clerk, okay. Your Worship, we do have, uh, Counselor Crowley has provided some updated wording. Perhaps I could send that to my colleague just for review purposes.
Absolutely.
Uh, Your Worship, just while my colleague loads that on the monitor, I, we did include, um, subject to, uh, Counselor Crowley and Dugay's concurrence, um, the caveat about subject to funding. So that's in the.
Correct.
Paragraph.
So I don't do that, John. Okay. Now, Counselor Crowley, you're moving this amendment to the main motion.
Uh, yes.
Okay. Your Worship, it was second of Counselor Dugay and their numbers speakers. Have we finally got the wordsmithing done?
Thanks, Your Worship. It is posted there, subject to concurrence by the mover and the seconder.
Counselor Crowley, you're okay?
Apologies, let me just, uh, correct. I, I'm.
Counselor Dugay, you're fine with it? Okay. We have some speakers. Counselor Baldwin. And then, uh, Counselor Burke and Parnell.
Yeah, Your Worship, I'll be very brief on this. Um, you know, given the staff report and, and given the, the vote of council tonight, um, and the fact that we haven't had any other proponents at any time bid on an RFP for such a service. I'm just wondering what council might do if the only proponent that comes forward is one city. Clearly tonight's vote has indicated that there's, that's, that's not acceptable. They don't want that. So I guess, I guess I'm asking if, if it's going to come back to council, I think Counselor Crowley had suggested, but if we find that the only organization, qualified community organization comes forward and it's the same one, rhetorically, I'm wondering what council will do then. And if, if that's the case, um, would the corporation be in a situation when they, that they might offer the service themselves? I don't know who can maybe answer that question. I guess perhaps through you to.
Mr. Lademan?
Mr. Lademan.
Mr. Lademan, please.
See this happening.
Sorry, uh, Mayor Liel, if, could this speaker ask the question again? We were just conferring as to changes we might make in the motion. So.
Counselor Baldwin, please repeat the question.
Yeah, sh- sure. Through you, um, Your Worship. What I was saying, Commissioner Lademan, is that if the RFP goes out, um, to qualified organizations with experience in homelessness as is in the motion, and we find that only one organization applies for or, or submits a bid for the RFP, clearly tonight's vote is, I'm, I'm making the inference that the, the current provider, there's something that's missing there. Not that, that's why council made that decision. I'm wondering what council will do if the only organization that bids is one city? And if it is, is an alternative for the city to offer the service themselves or ourselves or yourselves?
Thanks for the clarification and, and doing that again. I think, to, I think council is, is right in being app, or your question is right to being apprehensive that there will be multiple bidders. I think that's a risk that council runs, that there will be one bidder on this from our history. I think your assessment is correct that the possible only other alternative may be for the city to operate such an op, such a, such a business, a, a shelter, which would be fraught with cons, with problems, I can say, on, on many levels. So I think that is the risk and that may be the alternative. And I think there'd be a number of hurdles for us to get over, uh, if the city were to contemplate running a shelter.
Thank you for your, your response, uh, commissioner. And that's all I have to say, your worship.
Councillor Parnell and councillor Burke. Councillor Parnell, please.
I was, I was ahead of Parnell.
Councillor Parnell first to councillor Burke. Councillor Parnell, please.
Point of order.
Thank you. Oh, my God. Like all the time. Stop with the point of order. The mayor has called on me. Quit interrupting.
I can see on my screen that my hand was up first. It says number one.
Well, my hand was ignored before, councillor.
Oh, my God.
Councillor Parnell, then councillor Burke.
Thank you, mayor. Um, I appreciate the discussion and I appreciate the motion. Uh, but I do see that there are some issues. I am aware that there are people who would like to bid on this. Uh, um, I don't have solid evidence of that, but I know we have other people in the community who have done a fantastic job, who have been under the radar, who very well may bid on this. And we need to do a proper RFP. I will support it. However, I really do think, uh, with all due respect, um, to the mover and the secondor, that this needs to come back in closed session. We're dealing with finances, um, that are not all public, but also, you know, personnel and serious contracts. It's a very difficult situation. Um, I do believe this needs to come back into a closed session so we can have a full discussion about how we can handle this. Um, but, but I will defer to the advice of our commissioner of finance. Um, and perhaps even commissioner Potts, uh, legal, if we can go into closed on this. But I think the RFP should come back to us in closed session.
Thanks councillor Parnell. Councillor Burke, sir, you're next.
Mayor Leo, through you, um, I guess my first comment is I appreciate, um, councillor Baldwin's question because for me, um, you know, I sort of feel the same frustration. You hear from our staff what the answer is to this, uh, amendment that's coming after we've already cut the funding to Trinity. We hear the, we can feel the frustration in the commissioner's voice because he understands that there's probably only one person that's going to bid on this. We don't have a, a pink cloud provider that's going to meet all the criteria of all the objections that we've heard tonight. And we don't have a provider that owns their own building. So, uh, you know, anything that's going to come to us, I imagine is going to be exponentially, exponentially more costly, um, than what was just being presented to us and what was voted down. Um, and so, you know, I support the idea of, of wanting to try to save, um, a service that looks like what one city was providing. I really appreciate that. But knowing the reality of the situation, as the commissioner stated, you know, um, it's just, we should have had this conversation before we made that decision. Okay? Um, I have a question through you, Mayor Leo. It's Mr. Freeman. Um, is there not a structure set up for the funding of what this RFP would look like? Because the winter program at Trinity is being funded through HPP funding. So if we're successful with that next round of funding, won't we have extra funding that we could put towards this RFP?
Mr. Freeman, please. Or Mr. Ladman?
Uh, through you, Mayor Leo, I'll, I think I would be best to start the answer and Mr. Freeman can augment if, if it's, if it's necessary. The winter program of the six months is funded through the HPP program. So technically, there would be three months of winter funding program in the 2026 budget, as is through the HPP program. But not the amount that council is expecting to run a year-long shelter service. So that's a little nuanced, but there, there would be some funding available in the 2026 budget for a winter shelter option. But probably only three months worth at the rate that our current contract is with one city.
Did you, councillor Burke?
Um, yeah, thanks, Mayor Leo. So I'm just confused. Um, what are people going to be bid to, to? Commissioner Ladman, through you, Mayor Leo, what are, what are people going to be bidding on here? What, what is the, what is, what is the ceiling going to be?
Mr. Ladman, please.
Uh, through you, Mayor Leo, I think as commissioner Freeman mentioned, we would bring back what is submitted to, to the city despite what was bid on. There would be no maximum budget. It would be predicated on the budget being made available by council. And that would be part of the consideration of the RFP process is the amount of the, of the contract.
So three, Mayor Leo, please, to commissioner Ladman then as part of the, and, and commissioner Ladman, I'm, I'm not at all trying to be pointed in your direction. I'm just trying to understand what we're voting on. Um, are we going to put out an RFP that would build us a shelter system that would deal with all of the people from our data that are unhoused?
Mr. Ladman, please, or Mr. Freeman?
Um, your worship, perhaps I could jump into the conversation. So, so a request for proposal by their nature is not, if, we're not asking for a specific solution. We're, we are presenting a problem and we are asking the proponents to provide solutions for us and what it would cost. That is the nature of, of a request for proposal. We have a problem. We're looking for solutions. Provide us with solutions. That is very different than if we were, you know, asking for a tender, we need to purchase this truck to do these things. That's very different. Request for proposals, we have a problem, we're looking for solutions. So it's broad, it's ambiguous to the councillor's point. We're not, and, and that's part of when I was leaning over chatting to, to commissioner Ladman when he was being asked a question and I was occupying his attention. That's exactly what we were talking about because we're not spending the time here this evening itemizing out all of the criteria of what is going to be encompassed in the bid document. I think council is going to rely upon the subject matter expertise of their staff to, we know what the problem looks like. We need to package it up and issue the document and see what the results are and bring that back to council.
Through, through you, Mayor Leo, um,
Go ahead.
Commissioner Freeman, I understand all that and what I'm just seeking on is clarity and maybe, maybe both options will be represented in the RFP. But what we've done tonight is we've cut, we've essentially cut a service that has a specific amount of beds. Are we looking to replace that service that we've cut? Or are we looking, uh, to address the overall issue of those that are unhoused or both?
Mr. Freeman, please.
Uh, your worship, I think if, and, and that's the nuance of writing the bid document. I think that we could, we could ask in the response for, for perhaps options or a tiered response uh, to, to the problem or to the need in the community. I, I, I think we would need to leave it fairly open and, and perhaps have a, have, um, a, a, almost a, I was going to use the word menu, but, but have options to present to council as part of the solution. But, but that would involve, you know, some, some being, you know, some subject matter expertise being put together and writing the document and, and working with it to make sure we're happy in how we're describing it.
Thanks, Mr. Freeman.
Thank you.
Sounds the funniest, councillor Burke, and then I'll move it though.
Sorry?
Anything further, councillor Burke?
Yeah, through you, Mayor Leo, um, to commissioner Ladman, CAO Reyna, or anyone from staff.
Councillor Burke, one moment. We got to get a motion to go by at 10 o'clock. Move by councillor Dugay. Uh, councillor Baldwin, we need to vote on that. And then I'll get right back to you, sir.
We're just waiting for councillor Bassiatus to vote.
And that's carried. Sorry to interrupt you, councillor Burke. Please continue.
No problem at all. Thank you, Mayor Leo. Um, through you to staff. Um, one of the things, um, that the city of Toronto does when they, when they implement, um, homeless, homelessness serving, um, responses in, in their city is that they don't, um, they, they don't let members of council know the neighborhood that it's going into. They want, um, they want council to decide on the project based on the merit of the project. Um, is that something that our staff has, has thought of or considered?
Mr. Ladman, please.
Uh, through you, Mayor Leo. I, staff are certainly aware of what city of Toronto does. I could point council to the Toronto Star article this week, though, that's prominent in the Toronto Star advising about the problems that that's occurred for Toronto city council. So I don't think that's a straightforward item, but if council wanted us to direct that in some way, but, uh, I think that's quite complicated.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mayor Leo. That's all.
Any further speakers on this? We'll go to a vote. And that's carried. Now we'll go back to the main motion as amended. Councillor Dugay? We need a secondor. Councillor Crowley, main moment, as amended. Commissar questions, we'll go to a vote.
Sorry, I had my hand up, Mayor Leo.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councillor Burke, please.
Um, yes, I'd like to move an amendment that we add the, uh, recommendation in the report that gives staff the authority to, um, proceed with, uh, investigating funding sources for more modular units at Wolf Street.
You're moving that? Is there a secondor? Councillor Real? Discussion?
Your worship, could that be repeated? I did not hear the, uh, request.
Councillor Burke, could you give that to us again, please?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Leo. Um, you know, there was a lot of recommendations within this report, many. And, uh, I think one of the ones that we missed that I'm moving the amendment about is the staff recommendation, recommendation that allows, um, staff to look into funding sources um, to expand the capacity, uh, at the Wolf Street modular community.
Uh, and councillor Crowley seconded that? Further discussion on that? Oh, I'm sorry. Councillor Real, I'm sorry. It's been a long night. Councillor Dugay to speak on this.
We may have to.
I apologize.
We may be extending the hour to midnight. Um, your, your worship, um, I am concerned, um, I think if we're contemplating additional capacity at Wolf Street, we have to look back to the apparent decision where we indicated 50 modular houses on a temporary basis at the subject location. I appreciate, uh, funding, but ma- maybe it's, uh, looking at funding for additional modular units, but perhaps not limiting to Wolf Street. Cause we have a pre-commitment, in my estimation, to that neighborhood. It's 50 units. It was meant to be temporary. So perhaps we should, the motion, if councillor Burke's agreeable, that we explore funding options, federal, provincial, for additional modular, um, accommodations.
Councillor Burke, would you consider that?
Uh, I'd like to keep it, um, to the staff recommendation, please. I think that, um, we build infrastructure around Wolf Street where it makes it very easy to add more units there. And to look at something where we would add additional modular units elsewhere, um, would be a completely different, uh, scope of a project.
Thank you. Please provide your answer there, councillor Dugay. Any further, uh, discussion on this? We'll go to a vote.
No, sorry, I have my hand up.
Councillor Parnell. Sorry, councillor Parnell.
No, it's, it's okay. I know. Um, um.
Very difficult, right?
It is, sir. I've been in the chair position and I completely understand. Uh, but I, I believe that would be a reconsideration of decisions already made, sir.
Clerk?
Uh, thank you, your worship. If a matter has been previously decided by council and then it, then it wouldn't be considered to be a reconsideration if, if a matter has been, uh, already previously decided by council. In that event, then it's a, uh, it's a two-thirds vote to, uh, to reconsider a matter.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Back to you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Ladman, we need some guidance here. Was this, it wasn't a previous report that turned down? Is that correct or?
Uh, through you, uh, Mayor Leo, I just, if you could just give me a moment, we're just discussing that here and I'll, I'll just answer that in maybe 30 seconds if I could, just while we're looking into that.
Yeah, it's a question of a simple, but well, a simple majority vote or a two-thirds vote to bring it back. A subordinate.
Um, Mayor Leo, may I say something?
Go ahead, councillor Burke.
We voted down, uh, an option to look into funding for, um, a different version of this project. Um, but I believe that the idea to expand at Wolf Street was open-ended and therefore that's the reason why, um, it was in the staff report.
Councillor Burke, if you'd just give us a moment, we're having a bit of a, a discussion, uh, with, uh, commissioner Ladman and staff.
In case you don't see it, I do have my hand raised, sir.
We see it now. Mr. Ladman, please.
Um, so through you, Mayor Leo, I think the, the issue that was in front of council, uh, last Christmas was council actually approved the expansion of Wolf Street with, with those 16 units pending a stream of funding. That, that, that stream of funding did not come through for the city. So I, I, you know, in listening to this, I don't think it's a reconsideration of a vote because the last vote was actually in the positive to approve the 16 units using a certain stream of funding.
So we've already approved it. We're now seeking a simple amendment to pursue those, uh, alternative funding streams. Pretty straightforward. Okay, thank you. Uh, councillor Parnell, please.
Um, sorry, um, you know, that was a while ago and I, I know that we had made a promise to that community, uh, of 50 and not to do more. Uh, because, you know, it's, it hasn't been good for that community, but it's been even worse for the neighborhood around Trinity. And, but we made a commitment to 50. Um, and I, I, we should not be expanding that. So I, I can't support it because we have to keep our word to some people. Thank you.
Thanks. Based on the information from, uh, commissioner Ladman, it's not a reconsideration. It will be a simple, a majority vote, either yea or nay. Are there any more discussions on this? Clerk?
Thanks, your worship. Uh, just for the benefit of everyone, uh, my colleague just had that posted. I just wanted to confirm, uh, councillor Burke's wording. This would be, uh, an amending motion moved by councillor Burke, seconded by councillor Real. That staff be directed to consider funding options to support additional modular units at Wolf Street? And I ensure that we have that correct through the, the councillor Burke.
Um, th- thank you, Mayor Leo. Uh, through you to Mr. Kennedy. I mean, my wording, I think, um, was just trying to summarize what was in the report. If we could use what the staff recommendation was in the report, I think it's my intent to, uh, support that recommendation. Thank you.
Mr. Clerk?
Option E. It's option E in the report.
Clerk, please.
Thanks, your worship. I'll get this over to my colleague, but it, uh, thanks for the assistance. It reads that the commissioner of community services be authorized to apply for capital funding as it may become available to increase the number of units on site at the Wolf Street Bridge Modular Housing Program up to 16 units.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Does that suffice, councillor Burke?
Uh, Mayor Leo, yes, thank you.
Councillor Real, that suffice, works? Thanks. Any further, councillor, councillor Crowley, please.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Um, I guess to Mr. Ladman, did we pass some, we don't, we aren't sure if Wolf Street or if the modular housing community is going to last next year, do we? I mean, I'm not, I'm not trying to poo-poo this by any means. I'm just trying to say we, we're still unsure, right? So would this, if?
Mr. Ladman, please. Sorry.
That's correct. At, at last month's council meeting, uh, there was, uh, review of this issue, and the provincial funding is set to expire at the end of March. We expect it to be, um, extended, but council voted to use reserve funds, uh, to wind down if we were unsuccessful in gaining the same amount of provincial funding in that program.
Presumably, Counselor Crowley, that was a question we were going to ask HPP Smith, if we had have, uh, proceeded last.
If we had been here, if we, if we got him out tonight.
Any, any further questions? We'll go to a vote. And that is carried. So, Mr. Clerk, we now vote on the main motion as amended twice. Any further comes or questions? We're now voting on the main amendment, a main amendment as amended twice. Natalie can get us up for us.
Sorry, Mayor Leo, can we separate this out?
Sure. No, it's been amendment, uh, Mr. Clerk, it's, it's now one package, right? What do you want? Uh, sorry, uh, Counselor Burke?
Uh, it's, Andrew, could, could we separate if possible?
Oh, I'm sorry, Andrew.
Oh, that's okay, don't worry about that. Um, can we just separate at least the Wolf Street, uh, expansion out from the other three?
Yes. Could always, it, everything could be separated out.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, that's correct, Natalie. We'll go to a vote.
Thanks, your worship. I'm just looking at my colleague, does she, I believe she's going to load, uh, load the main motion as A, B, and C?
And that is carried. And now we'll vote on the separated one dealing with Wolf Street. And that is carried. Mr. Clerk, we now move, uh, we have no notices of motion. Do we have any notice of motion?
Uh, no, your worship, we do not.
Uh, we'll now move to bylaws. Bylaw 15F has been separated out, uh, uh, from Counselor Dugay. So if someone would, would like to move bylaws, uh, 25 dash 84 to bylaw 25 dash, uh, 91, with the exception of, uh, bylaw 25 dash 89. A seconder?
I will move.
Thank you. Commissar questions? All in favor? We'll go to a vote. That is carried. Someone would like to move, uh, bylaw 15F, 25 dash, uh, 089, that's dealing with Argyle. Counselor Baldwin, Counselor Crowley, we'll go to a vote. And that's carried. Other business? Counselor Baldwin?
Yeah, your worship, very, very quickly, I, I think, um, I'd like to thank, um, Clerk's Office, specifically, uh, Mr. Kennedy and Ms. Garnett, for all of their efforts in putting together this emergency meeting because of, of the storm and the blackout on Monday evening. I'd like to thank our commissioners and, and directors, the public, the press, and everybody else who's here. Uh, it was a difficult, uh, transition to get back here, yeah, in two days. So I just want to thank, uh, all staff and everybody else for their patience and their indulgences this evening to finish the, the council's work. Thank you, worship.
Thank you very much, Counselor Baldwin. Uh, our next item of business will be the confirmation bylaw. Somebody like to move that? Counselor Dugay? Counselor Crowley, we'll go to a vote. That is carried. Next item of business is adjournment. Counselor Baldwin, Counselor Dugay, we'll go to a vote. That's carried. Thank you, colleagues. Uh, thank you, uh, staff, and thank you, audience, and, and the next time we will meet will be August the 5th. Enjoy your time off.